And then it go worse when I had that, yeah, it's great if there's new man.
Yeah.
I mean.
You wrote this down to guys, Jeff.
But that was a lot worse.
I don't know, but it's gonna.
I'm gonna call to order the work session in town council. Breckenridge, August twenty second, twenty twenty three, it is three P M. We begin with.
Are we recording?
No, we're not gonna ever record again. I don't like that. Uh, yes, I'm sure we're recording.
Double recording.
Recording you in particular, you're isolated.
Okay.
Like tourism office presentation. Gentlemen.
Thank you. Good to be with you. My name is Travis Beck. I'm the chair of the Board of Directors for the Tourism Office. And Bill, as you all know, is here with me today. Thanks for taking some extra time. To go through what we're up with up to and kind of make sure we're still aligned and where we're headed. Um, I believe there are some BTO staff here, and I'm sure there's some other board members. Sorry, I didn't see him walk in. But let's get rolling. I know time is precious here today.
For the council, Lucy's on virtual.
And Lucy's here as well.
Lucy Harris.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, I got you.
Lucy.
Hi.
Yeah, Lucy, apologize. She couldn't make it today, but she is in Georgia at a conference. All right. So just quickly, we'll we'll buzz through.
The board to come sit in the front row, in case we have any questions.
Well, of course.
Please.
And Wendy Wendy Wolf is online as well.
Firing squad. Geez, you guys are rough today.
We won't interrupt you anymore.
That's cool.
No, you're getting a flow going.
All right. Uh, well, thank you again. So there's a few slides. I you guys are highly familiar with the the Tourism Office. Um, and I think I thank Lucy and the and the BTO staff for that, adding all the transparency and everything they do. Uh, with you all. Uh, this first slide hits on on the mission of the BTO. That's still the same as it has been. We did, uh, as a board, we met a few months back and revisited the the mission and the vision and things like that. So we're gonna flip through some of those. Um, so enhance the economic vitality of Breckenridge and support the community's unique character and quality of life. I think, um, I think that still represents things really well for us. Wish you're gonna need to drive that because I can't do it on my left hand for some reason. All right. So the vision, this is something that's still a little bit of a work in progress. You know, we're all kind of wordsmiths and and words do matter. But, you know, from from a vision standpoint, BTO is recognized is a recognized industry leader, leading D M M O. We elevate Breckenridge beyond the tourism lens by enhancing our image as a dynamic place where everyone is welcome to live, work, and visit. I think that's pretty clean and hopefully still resonates with you all. We also, on an annual basis, revisit our strategic plan. This is similar to how it has been. I'm not gonna read through this. There are five of them here. Uh, four of them are really external. The last one there is more as a BTO as an employer. And having a great team, uh, and and ways to retain that great team into the future. So you can see it does align pretty well, um, or very well with the strategic goals of the town. These came from the Destination Management Plan. I think they're great. I think the the Tourism Office really uses these as a good benchmark and sounding board for and how we wanna, uh, present the the community and how we wanna represent the community. All right, so I'm getting into some data, uh, being one of those goals is uh, the BTO really being a, as I think of it, as a data-driven organization. And I got Mr. Data here to my left, and Bill is gonna, uh, touch on some of the, um, the data for you.
Just for clarification, we break it down by a couple of different segments within the summer season, May through October. And then we look at the core part of it as far as like from June to September where the real money months are. So that's why the two designations are, but you can see, you know, where things are performing year over year. You know, twenty-three right now for summer room nights on the books, we're two percent above last year, and this is the comparison of key data, uh, which is a great recovery because we went into the summer season in that twenty to twenty-five percent range down, and, uh, things are recovering quickly.
I think that shows on the next slide, Bill.
Yeah. Right here. Broken down my months is looking at it, what's happening in the future. You know, right now, August, we're down about one point two percent on guest nights. September is up fourteen percent as of data as of Monday, so, um, we're gonna be looking at a very nice fall. Oktoberfest is shaping up pretty well. It's kind of tough to compare numbers, but it's looking good. Reason it's tough to compare weekend later last year. Also, we had Mountain twenty thirty, if you recall, as a group. And then Beaver Run also had a behavioral health group as well, too, that's shifted to another week. But when we look at the F I T. Number, side of the side, things are booking up well, and all summer long, we've seen tremendous pickup. You know, inside of that twenty-one, fourteen, and even seven days of arrival.
Yeah. So overall, I think it's 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 still pretty, the data is still pretty consistent for, um, normal years, you know, non-COVID years. I think that that rebound's happening. Um, I'm sure we could speculate on kind of where tourism is headed this summer. You know, there's a lot of talk about Europe and and other places. Um, you know, data will come out, uh, that includes one thing or another there. Um, any questions on on the data side or or, uh, the lodging side?
Didn't you say, uh, this up two percent from last year? That's this summer, right?
This summer.
Know where the summer is, don't we?
Well.
Yeah, but I think overall, if you if you look at more, um, national trends, we're we're certainly competitive, but there's a lot of noise out there around kind of where people are moving.
There are other communities and.
I think so. I don't really visit.
Other resort communities are not faring as well as.
Yeah.
Is what I'm, that's the matter. We've looked at.
Right. Amen. Cool. Yeah. Um, all right. Good question.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Um, all right. So switching over, uh, to who is visiting beyond the kid that I think, if you go back, I think he's trying to put his fingers up Isaac's nose.
Oh.
That's my interpretation. So in addition to to them, uh, we have some more data to just, um, walk through in terms of some of the, um, demographics, um, that are showing up.
Yeah, there's a, there's one error on this graph with the out-of-state overnight visitation and Colorado overnight visitation. Out-of-state overnight is currently running at fifty-seven percent, and then the Colorado overnight is twenty. So you'll see it adds up to ninety-nine percent, but that's because I had kind of rounded down on some decimal points, so.
So I'm sorry, did you just say that out-of-state overnight should say fifty-seven instead? Okay.
Set up forty-eight.
That was my whole question. You took my question for the whole.
I know.
That was.
Like, where did all the numbers come? So weird.
I get you. I get you.
Perfect.
So, yeah, and again, um, the primary markets are pretty consistent for what we've seen, um, at the top of that graph with the, the dates are being covered up of that center columns twenty twenty-three and the right-hand columns two thousand nineteen. So you can see kind of how, um, those primary markets are lining up and staying generally consistent for what we've seen in the past. Uh, length of length of stay also going up. That's always a important metric to look at in terms of, um, spending profiles. Anything to add there, Bill?
Yeah, I think when you'll see some other data with, when we compare the mobile data, some of the primary and secondary markets, you'll see some shift like Missouri shows up a little bit more. Missouri is pretty close to where Florida is. I think some of Florida decrease can be attributed to we're getting more visitation from other states. So it's compressing, you know, some of Florida's percentages, but Texas is our tried and true, as we know.
Bill, do these numbers somewhat reflect where we spend marketing dollars? Is that reflective in visitation?
I'll I'll defer that one to others that know.
Yeah, the answer is yes, Carol.
And I know this length of stay at five point five days has been kind of since somewhere during or after COVID. Do you see that as staying? Is that the new norm or is that, are we still like in a weird spot, do you think?
Well, from a year-over-year basis, that's probably down like maybe a tenth or so from what we saw COVID, maybe two tenths.
Okay.
It's always hard to predict the length of stay. That's pretty high. If I had to lay money on it, it might go down a little bit more. With a better percentage of the Colorado, actually, the other state overnight, you know, in our numbers. That's what will propel it up. However, we have seen a longer length to stay from our Colorado overnight as well, too. So it's it's interesting dynamics that are happening.
Yeah, Kelly, one of the things that impacts that, um, among many are, you know, airfare prices. We've we've got more people flying in than before, but air is pretty, um, you know, pretty spendy and also, you know, the hotel, the A D Rs impact length of stay, too.
Thanks, Lucy.
Hey, Bill, what what is our annual, uh, percentage occupancy in in our, uh? Do you know off the top you had?
From.
In our lodging community?
Uh, God, in the past, it's probably.
It's around fifty-something percent for the year, Dick. It goes low in the summer, like thirty, and a little higher in the summer, but we're right around fifty, fifty-five for the year.
I was gonna say fifty-two, but yeah.
Okay, that works. That works, Bill.
Low fifties.
Hey, do you guys, is there any sense or any way you can predict or respond to what's gonna happen with Floyd Hill? If that's going to, what's that's gonna do to us compared to what it's going to do to, say, veil or steamboat, or I guess it's all the I seventy Carter. But I just wonder if if just kind of like the frustration factor could play into, uh, to what's gonna be happening in our future.
If I had a prediction, it'd probably decrease the amount of day visitation.
Yeah.
I think less impact on the out-of-state overnight, um, and probably a little bit more impact on Colorado overnight. But I think the day visitation will probably be most impacted, uh, because two eighty-five is still a busy corridor as well, too. It's it's not fun traveling on that on weekends, especially in summertime.
I'll give the mic a little more.
Oh, sorry.
Well, then. Uh, we talked about the mobile, um, uh, mobile phone tracking. Some of those statistics, uh, Bill mentioned those earlier. This is comparing, uh, phone tracking, May through July twenty twenty-three to two thousand nineteen. Um, so you can see, uh, in twenty twenty-three, uh, numbers are up. Um, so, um, I don't know, Bill, what you would attribute that to.
Ralph, what I would say on this one, it's a little hard to read because of that Y access, they're measured differently. Um, so it's it's a little hard to get sense out of that, but if you kind of, we we use the mobile data tracking to give us a ballpark on the number of visitors because we don't get that from the R R C. Data. And so if you, uh, kind of drop those lines down, add up like what those number of visitors days are on each of those graphs, it will show. And this is just out of state that we've had about a ten percent increase in out-of-state visitors since two thousand nineteen. It's not obvious, but that's what you come up with on these.
All right. Just.
Yeah, wrong. Yeah, right.
It's a scale of it. Yeah. Yeah.
What, like, okay, so to two, uh, twenty-three, nineteen to, uh, one sixty K on Sunday, we'll say, and then and then on in twenty-three, it's two thousand, two hundred thousand. Why? Do you think it did? Did the pandemic kind of increase our attractiveness to people? I mean, it did it. Was the pandemic good for business, you know, after it ended?
Well, I would go back to the longer length of stays again as well, too, you know, so people are staying more Sunday nights.
Okay, so that's.
Leaving on a Monday for a variety of reasons, both in-state and out-of-state.
Yeah, right.
It's a good question, Jeffrey, like for, we have no, no idea what's up with Monday. You know, and again, this is one data source, and, you know, none of these in and of themselves are completely reliable, which is why we invest so heavily in research. So we can always look at multiple sources and and, you know, kind of triangulate on what we think is happening. I wouldn't just go by this one.
Does this pull out residents that have out-of-state numbers or is it embedded in there? Like, do they track folks that are here three months of the year and pull those out of those numbers?
Sure. Um, they would be considered residents, so they would not be in this.
Yeah.
Lovely. Thank you.
And they'll do it strictly by area code. It's a, there's a definition for residents and.
Yes, like how many hours they're in the destination.
Super. Thank you, Lucy. And Dick.
All right. Let's keep moving. So let's talk about, um, the Destination Management side of, uh, the BTO and and the different initiatives and in positive things that, um, we feel we're doing within the community. Um, Community Vision was on that prior slide. You don't need to go back to that, Bill, but, um, and part of the, um, uh, Be Like Breck uh, campaign is, um, having business partners as well. So they're just really, we're seeing a really strong community in business support for it as well, uh, for the Be Like Breck campaign and the strategies, um, that have been built. Um, awareness is really high, signage is is improving great. I think we all see that around town. So, uh, the message is getting out, um, to the community and and certainly beyond as well. Through that, um, initiative, the BTO has also, uh, been awarded the Governor's Award for Outstanding Sustainability Initiative. I personally am really proud of this and and going back to the Destination Management, uh, Plan Days of, um, sustainability and kind of being on the tip of the spear, uh, in terms of environmental stewardship within communities. Um, it's a really cool, um, award, and I and the team's just doing an amazing job, um, with that. Um, also, uh, uh, D E I is certainly a high priority for the for the town and for the BTO. And so there have been initiatives, um, with that as well. Um, one of those was, um, Tamika Jones, who's a writer, um, also won, uh, after doing some work with the community, uh, won a Heartland Emmy Award. So there's just a lot of great press about what we're all doing and what we're all trying to move toward. Um, it's pretty powerful stuff. And even when I travel around, I hear about it from other communities that that I'm in as well. It's really cool. Really proud of it. Really proud of it. Uh, community outreach um, has been, um, oh, and one other thing uh, on this slide, it just shows the imagery that the BTO is. Pushing out into the market. Um, I think the statistic is somewhere around thirty-five percent of images. Um, uh, have a a DEI focus um, in them, so I'm really um, walking the walk on this. Um, community focus is huge. We all, we all know that that's such an important part of. Um, the balancing act that we do um, is is that quality of life for the residents. Um, while balancing that with quality of place um, for the guests. So there's a number of different things that the team is doing uh, that I think you all are aware of, but just to touch on those, one Breckenridge. Is huge. Um, it's making a difference in the community. The DMMO download is just awareness in terms of data. Um, the business work that we're doing, um, and then some of the other engagement with the community with what's coming up in terms of activities. But also, um, what I, what we think is really cool is um, uh, engaging the uh, Hispanic and minority community and. And um, uh, providing free uh, English classes and things like that to the community. So really cool stuff happening there as well. Alright, um. Let's see, so I'm trying to look at the top of that slide. That's fine, Bill. So in terms of strategy. Um, I'm sorry, in terms of um. Why we go up? In terms of the research we're doing, um, so part of that is the marketing and guest profiles. We talked about some of the data that's happening. Um, that data influences the management side of what we do. We, like I said before, we're data-driven organization and we really use that to. Make informed decisions um, and get that feedback from the community as well. Um. Moving along here, uh, guest service, um, and on the training side, Bill can speak to that for maybe just one minute. Um, because that's uh, partly his baby, mostly his baby.
Yeah, because we have, right now, most of our focus with the one Breckenridge training is custom training, working with lodging companies. We have some scheduled this fall. We've worked for a free ride for a number of years. Um, trying to increase our champion recognition, we're gonna, we've had. Want to recognize them quicker to when the nomination comes in. We've we've waited and had big events. Now we're gonna start recognizing folks inside the businesses. We've done that with a couple of businesses already and it's gone over very well.
Alright, um, and uh. The rest of that, we don't need to touch on directly. I'd like to spend, make sure we spend some time to just talk about kind of where we're headed. So. On the strategy side of things, um, still primarily the same priority is is summer and fall. Uh, out of state. Um. Is uh, two to four percent growth over twenty twenty-three, um, but certainly that's uh, part of this conversation is to make sure we're aligned with that. Make sure we're not looking for too much or too little. Um, still always trying to find that sweet spot in what we're what we're doing. Um. You know, another thing that we want to make sure we're aligned on is the the balanced year-round economy. Um, that again, uh, stems from the. Uh, destination management plan. Uh, I know there's been some some conversations around what that means and the language there. Um, as as we're still looking at it, it it to us, it means forty percent of business in the summer and fall. Um, and that's kind of how we're seeing balance um, in the in the year-round economy. So I don't know if there's any immediate feedback on on that.
How you guys feel about that number? You know, I think, you know, before we get to the number, I think that there's been a lot of conversations in the community that have been held on. You know, what the metrics are, like you alluded to, what does it mean to have a balanced year-round economy? Does that mean that twelve months a year we're busy? Or just the, you know, marketing to spring, summer and fall, or I guess summer and fall. Um, and just kind of curious on how the BTO sees the difference between. Trying to have a consistent guest, um. Guest population in town versus uh, putting our best foot forward and maybe that is. Not twelve months out of the year and and from a BTO standpoint, maybe that isn't October or maybe it is and kind of if you talk to. Where where the BTO is on. What's the most important goal facing you between those two of putting our best foot forward versus having population in town?
I think um, I'll I'll take that one Travis or I'll start. Um, Jay, I think, you know, putting our best foot forward. Is doesn't have to be consistent business, you know, every month. I mean, I think the ebbs and flows are. Are normal and it's a good reflection of, you know, what Breckenridge is. So I don't, you know, like what we're, May is a meeting and convention month, so we're never going to really drive that for visit, you know, for. Um, leisure visits, um, early part of June, you know, kind of depends on the year. So I think the volumes we have. Um, you know, summer, like our biggest summer month is July and looking at twenty-two numbers. You know, I think we were at seventy-two million dollars in taxable sales. The closest next month to that is February at one eleven. So it's, you you know, like the biggest month in summer is still less than the small, you know, smaller month in um. Winter. So I think like where we're at today feels pretty normal. We want to make sure we have enough business. That businesses can stay open and employees that need to work can work and get their rents paid and things like that. But we're not really shooting for summer to ever feel like winter. That's not in our, on our radar screen at this point. And certainly, um, any of the board members that would like to weigh in, um, please do. I would throw out, I just uh, ran the numbers for twenty-two. And in twenty-two, the summer, the May through October revenues were about thirty-six percent of the total. So we're we're, you know, that sixty forty split is is kind of roughly where we're at, where where we were last year.
When you say, when, yeah, when this says target two to four economic growth. Is that revenue or is that bodies?
Uh, it's revenue.
Okay.
Because that's what's, I mean, that's what um, town measures. That's what we can measure. We can't really measure. We don't have a great measure for bodies yet. It's getting better with mobile data, but for us, it is primarily room nights. And when we say economic growth here, we're talking about, you know, May through October. So you know, our emphasis is room nights and then everything, you know, uh, the the other lines of business fall out of that, the restaurant retail. Activities, um, so um, we're looking at primarily, well, like when we measure that two to four percent, we're looking at total taxable revenue. But for us, lodging is what's driving that.
And and granted, I'm I'm sure this is a simplistic way of looking at it and and, you know, I don't. I don't have an in-town business or anything like that, but if we, you know, we grow four percent for five years. We're growing twenty, that's twenty percent growth from what it is right now. And I mean, do you guys think that the valley can sustain that? Do you think uh, housing a label?
But a lot of that, Jeffrey, is gonna be pricing, you know, like that's. Prices go up by two percent a year even before inflation, you know what I mean? So this is really conservative. I think most years Breckenridge. I think I'm sure Dave is in the in the room, um, but most years Breckenridge has beat that by quite a bit. Um, so it's a really a pretty conservative number and, you know, the point here really is we want to match the targets that the town sets. You know, we're separate from that. We're 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 trying to just be in line with that and it typically has been targeted around that or maybe a a just a little.
You know, I guess that's what I'm asking, does the town.
And Dave's, Dave's um, inflation adjusted numbers were very timely this week. Appreciate those numbers, Dave. They were fascinating.
Um, hear more about that a little bit.
Yeah, on average, two percent inflation over the last five years, I think was, um. You know, basically, if if the dollars grew up two percent over a five-year period. The volume, the the bodies are level.
Okay.
Um, okay, so and that's, you know, even with the big spike in in um. Um, in inflation that, you know, a couple of year or two, um, that's that's what is, I think that the. Um, standard of of the industry is using two percent of the last five years, so. Um, so it might sound like more than it is.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, reality is a small business and, you know, I'm. You know, I I. You know, I'm I'm one of the mature businesses and uh, but I mean, for young businesses, their expenses are going up so fast. I mean, we've, a- as I think Travis and Lucy both said, you know, I think our job is to. Strike a balance of of quality of life and quality of place and that's what we all agreed to was the thing and and um. To have quality of place, we need to have thriving business community and zero growth. Is not gonna get us there, you know, because expenses go up is reality. I mean, that's what inflation is. So, you know.
I asked a question I wanted to.
No, I know. I don't think there's a right answer, you know, I I think we'll probably all have a different answer, but um. I, yeah, I was in agreement with this on the BTO board that 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 two to four is the right number is my personal opinion. But um, we may all have different answers up here.
Okay, did we answer?
Finish it out?
It it is. I think, I guess my other, my only other question would be like. If if we're managing that out-of-state growth, saying, okay, we only want two to three, four percent. Out-of-state visitor growth. What unintended consequences can that have with? Um, in-state travel or um, available units for accommodations where ADR start going down. More of a focus on not by the BTO, but by the accommodations of in-state. Uh, travel. And so like, i- is it, is that the right metric to use for the BTO to say, okay, we. We're gonna try to, this is our, you know, the bullseye that we're trying to hit is a two to four percent out-of-state visitor growth. Where there's a lot of other variables that may have, if that is, if that was to be used in a silo with blinders on. That could have unintended consequences of increased day visitors.
I think that's a really good point, Jay, and it's it's probably what actually happens. Um, but that's where the management side of the equation comes in for us because we're looking. You know, we can look at occupancies and say, well, that's, you know, thirty percent isn't too crowded, but if you're on Main Street, it feels really crowded. And that's where we can lean in with the management dispersion strategies and things like that to help manage the volumes that are here. Understanding we don't control a hundred percent of, you know, who's coming in, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Um, last on that list and and Lucy was just uh, referencing it is that balance of marketing and. And that is one thing that we want to make sure that we're aligned kind of based on. Some of the information, kind of high-level information that we provided today with, you know, the marketing data versus the. Um, more qualitative management data of the initiatives, is that? Um, is that about right? Does that feel right? Um, for you all.
I think so. I appreciate the last couple of years, BTO, looking at the data, reading our community and leaning more heavily into the management side. And um, as Wendy Wolfos says, it is that constant balancing act, but I think where things stand. The BTO is doing a great job, the work Tessa does on Main Street. I think it helps inform some of what. Town does or we hear what's going on on the street, which I think is super valuable to us. And then the the focus on DEI. I think has been incredible with the BTO.
And I believe there's another reference to the day, some survey um, about to come out.
Yeah, shortly after Oktoberfest.
Okay. So.
Yeah, any other comments?
You guys.
Yeah, I would like to say on behalf of the BTO team that we just really thank the council and town management for the support. And the ability to have, you know, really good transparent conversations and I want to thank my board for their support. And also mention that David Hughes did join this call, one of our board members. So thank you all.
Thanks, Lucy.
Hey, uh, Lucy, I'll let the council know that we'll be coming back to them shortly. We need uh, our actual agreement with BTO. This expires at the end of this year and so Shannon's been working close with Lucy, we're uh, kind of make sure that scope of work. Of what we're putting in the agreement is uh, lines up. Uh, in the new agreement and then we'll uh, share that with the council.
That's a classy headboard, Lucy.
Yeah, it is. Got all the big cargo ships going by the window here. It's pretty cool.
Nice.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
It's not over the line, but it's.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, planning commission decisions, uh, any body have any? They want to talk about. Yes, no, yes, no. Legislative review, you have the second reading of uh, display of outdoor merchandise code change.
Good afternoon, uh, there are no changes from first reading.
Any questions?
Are we leaving the dorm for like a third one? Is that what we talked about earlier?
Yeah, third weekend, yes.
Okay, alright.
Anything? No. Mark, thanks for that. Uh, ordinance proving the BTO office lease. Rick?
No changes from first reading. This will be a uh, allow me to enter into a five-year agreement. Lease agreement with BTO to lease space next door for their office.
Rick, with this, is this since we're gonna be talking about the contract with BTO, would it make sense to align the? The terms, the lease and our contract with them or if something changes, not that it will. Okay.
And purveying ourselves, really.
Everybody good with it?
Yeah.
Alright, uh, how residence, local landmark, Chris?
Alright, well, good afternoon. We just got a couple of uh, local landmarkings that are really. Um, required by the development permit to get uh, the free basement density before you tonight.
Any questions on the uh, Howe residence?
No.
Any questions on the Casey residence? Alright, easy peasy.
See you in a bit.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, manager report. Public projects?
Go ahead. We're gonna try to get, move through this quicker, so some of the stuff you all have read and just want to see if you have any question about things.
Do you have any questions on public projects?
Go ahead and ask about the dam. No, I'm not gonna ask about the dam, but but I um, I have a, it's uh, it's a fiber question and a BGV question. And they're in a twine. Should I wait for BGV?
No, ask her.
Are we muscling BGV to uh, uh, have allo up to their uh, if they, if we approve with it that. If PK things approved, that they have allo up there?
Muscling them, but we would certainly talk to them about the benefits of having allo.
Okay, like like being a friend.
Should be a strong suggestion.
Yeah, yeah.
And I would hope for workforce housing that they would consider a bulk deal.
Yeah, we can't make that a kind of a prerequisite.
Hmm, probably not.
But you can talk to me about it later. You can mention it.
Yeah, okay.
We can strongly encourage, but I think it, we're getting into shaky ground with the FCC and everything if we require.
Pearson just gave me some stink eyes, so I think I'll leave it at that.
Anything else on public projects? My group today, uh, mobility, mobility.
Rick reached out to everyone individually. No question.
We're done with all meeting by four o'clock, just watch.
Good afternoon. Mayor and council, um, Teddy's hanging out right behind me there. Um, first things first, the BSR uh, Blue Route Integration. Um, I do have Ryan Taylor here with the ski resort, uh, who I've been working closely with on this discussion. He's here if we have any notes. Uh, we want him to take back or feedback. Um, I think this overall is a, is a great idea that kind of serves three really big factors. Our community is number one, us as the town of Breckenridge is number two and uh, the ski resort as well, their needs is number three. So we definitely know and and as they're posted in there, there are some challenges. It's not a perfect plan. Um, I believe we've kind of vetted those and and we understand them. I think the good part here is that this is a pilot program. So if we see something that's not working, we can adjust it pretty quickly and easily. Um, we have the support of CDOT and. Uh, moving forward with this adjustment to our trolley route and to our purple route, which was a pretty big requirement. Uh, of the system and we also have agreement from uh, CDOT initially for the. Uh, leveraging of the bus purchase with the ski resort, so um, overall, pretty positive. With that, I am happy to take questions or answer. Well, we don't have to answer questions.
You mean, we're gonna like move away from the bluebird buses?
Uh, not necessarily move away from, um, they will sell us two of them and, and they're still going to run their red route, uh, the gold route during the day. And then uh, employee shuttles um, as they need to. Um, I think this is probably phase one in what might be a multi-tiered approach to possibly being able to say we're getting rid of those bluebird buses.
Okay, yeah.
And I'd say fantastic job to both of you guys.
Yeah, good work.
Very much appreciated. I know we've been trying to do this for a long, long time and uh. It's great to see a first step like this and I, it makes all the sense in the world to. Do it as pilot and continue to understand the challenges and. You know, it's probably never going to be perfect, but I know we can overcome them, so great job.
Is there, um, were there blue route stops on North French?
Yes, um, not as far uh, north as uh, Wellington was the last one.
Oh, that, so there was nothing on the other part of?
Correct.
North part of North.
No, yep, nothing up far further than North French, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I, I think the only real downside to this is. There's a bunch of people that are, that probably were on old blue that are used to going to peak nine. Yeah, and that's probably where, I mean, that'll probably be the only pushback. I can't imagine any other real feedback.
I totally agree. I think that uh, that is my big concern is the need to either transfer, but I also believe this will help. People can actually get on the purple route now and take it straight to the gondola where they can have quick access up the hill on the gondola, so. Might be a change in habit.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the Skyria has improved the lifts out of Peak Eight for beginners. I mean, like the, that, the people going to nine are usually. Lower level, so hopefully that's helpful too.
Well, the quicksilver can be such a cluster.
Oh, it's awful.
Like an insane, so.
Yeah. Always has the longest line.
I do have, you know, along those lines, I think that there should be some outreach to some of our lo- longtime locals who. Have that habit and, you know, we talked about changing habits. It's easier for some than others. Uh, that, you know, they have their routine of jumping on the balloon, heading to Beaver Run, having a burrito there and then. Going up uh, on nine where typically is less crowded in the day and just if we're able to. Use Brooke to reach out to them or even just some one-on-ones, uh, I think that would go a long way.
So what, how are they doing now then? They'll do?
They'll either have to transfer or go to Peak Eight.
Or maybe ride a winter ev.
Or a winter ev.
They transfer, they transfer like.
They can transfer at Jefferson onto the trolley to get to the ice rink, which they'd have to transfer again. Or depending on where they're at, they probably would want to ride to, to the transit center.
Which is not the greatest. Yeah, yeah. You know, that's, that's why I said there will be. Yeah. That's where the pushback will be, so.
I think it's just, it's easier to change the habits of our visitors and our guests versus the people that have done it for twenty, thirty years.
Well, and even outside of that, Jay, because you know, it is really, I mean, it's mainly the core. I think there are a lot of um, rentals. That consistently do that. They're the ones we need, we're going to need to tell them that they're going to have to tell their guests because I'm sure there's. Material inside of some of those houses that say you just walk outside and get on the blue route. We need to, we, we need to make sure that information goes to those people.
Get those property management companies on board.
Yeah. Is, do you think them, and I probably should ask, guy from Skier, is, is the motivation? For this, that, that they want to kind of spread out impact that Peak Eight is more accommodating to larger groups or is it just?
I won't speak for them, yeah, I won't speak for them, but I, I don't believe that's the intention of this. Um, I believe it's more of kind of resource efficiency.
Yeah, okay.
That blue route is underutilized um, as it is and yes, the people that ride it are vocal, but I think that the. The ridership that we can gain on the free ride with our trolley, it is easily picked up by our system, whereas the ski resort just doesn't need to be in that service.
I get you, thanks. Other questions? It's an important one, so.
Yeah, it is.
Alright.
Good job.
Uh.
Fighting stuff.
It is, I think it's great, yeah.
Man, I do think that uh, if we're on the e-ride, uh, the bikes that. The, on that survey that was done, the fact that signing up to use a brick e-ride is too complicated was zero. I think was a huge win and I, I just wanted to call that out for you and your staff and. Um, and the um, the drop mobility team for making it accessible for people to sign up and. I, I think that's a huge win.
Yeah, I think that's great feedback. Uh, Teddy, feel free to come up here, but I also, you know, one of the big takeaways I have here from the survey is that. People that have ridden the service, the bicycles are generally very happy with it. The people that have not ridden it are generally pretty negative of it, so um, I think we just need to get more people on the bikes.
Sounds funny.
But yeah.
Way it always is, man.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, even of the people that hadn't ridden it before, still seventy-five to eighty percent of respondents. Either agreed or strongly agreed that um, you know, it's a convenient way to get around. And overall, it has a positive impact for the community, so. It's, that's less than the people who had ridden it before, but it's still um, I think a pretty good number. So, yeah, it's uh. We had, we did the mid-season survey, hundred sixty-nine responses, ninety percent came from people who live or work here, ten, ten were from visitors. Um, and about two-thirds of those were for people who had ridden the bikes before and about a third had not, um, and I think it's. It's all very good, uh, useful information. We are starting to um, have conversations with Drop about. Future system planning for next year, um, going forward and we're kind of tentatively, at least at the staff level, based off of some early feedback. We've, we've heard from council, um, looking at trying to grow the program to a hundred and twenty-five bikes and twenty-five hub locations next year. So, um, just wanted to kind of take the temperature and see if that felt like a good number to get, to shoot for. Too high or too low and see if you had any feedback on that.
How many bikes though?
We've got seventy-five bikes and seventeen hubs with this, this year's program.
Teddy, how does our metrics compare for, to, on drop mo- from drop mobility's standpoint, like. How are, how does Breckenridge metrics of this pilot program compare to some of their other mature markets?
Uh, we're, we're doing really well. Um, the Eagle County program did just over seven thousand trips all summer last year. And we're at fourteen, over fourteen thousand trips so far and we still have, you know, Sept- all of September and October to go. So, um, we're doing, we're doing quite well. I don't know how we compare about with larger municipalities. And that sort of thing, I just know the comparison to our neighbors next door, um, we're doing good.
How many bikes and hubs do they have?
They have uh, one, like a hundred and fifty-five is what they're up to this year. They had less last year, I think, like one twenty-five last year. So, we've done, you know, more than twice as many trips with uh, fifty fewer bikes so far.
If it was a competition, we'd be winning, but it's not.
Curious like, i- is there a desired efficiency per bike that once we, once. You know, per bike, we, it's X number of rides that we, are we striving if, if our efficiency is. So over the average, does that mean that we have too few? Alluding to adding a lot more and. I guess what does the data show on the? The effectiveness of just more bikes versus more bikes and hubs and if you add more hubs, you're thinning out the extra bikes and. So like, how, where do you find that happy place and where is that um, peak efficiency?
I think uh, ultimately that we still need to understand that from our own perspective. I think on the other end of the spectrum. If you have um, too few bikes and they're being ridden too often, there's a lot more wear and tear on those particular bikes. So, we have a lot more that are down, which is what we are experiencing now with such a successful service. We're seeing a lot of out-of-service bikes, so. Um, we still need to get to that point of finding the ultimate efficiency.
Take it a step further, we want to see where there's uh, financial efficiencies again that, I mean, you're paying for your staff position. To be here and to manage these, so can they, can that same person, you know, can we break that cost down? And this is where, you know, we're going to be really be looking at, you know, what's that cost for going to. Fifty bikes or whatever it is, um, and do we see much more efficiency there at the cost, bringing that out over, over more bikes and so.
Related question is um, have, would you feel confident, Teddy, that we've, they've had enough staff and we've been able to about rebalance? And have the bikes where they're needed?
Uh, yes, we did uh, lose the full-time operations manager about two months into the program, so um, we. Kind of l- lost a key personnel, but there's two other local staff that are hired and then Drops brought in. Some of their other staff from other markets to fill in in the off-season and um. I think that it's improved over the course of the summer, um, in the last few weeks, some of the bike availability issues have been with parts. And um, the, the parts themselves and some supply chain issues with those, but then also in the shipping industry. One of the big freight shippers, Yellow Freight, something went bankrupt overnight and they were. Chasing down parts orders and they just got a shipment of wheels in yesterday. That's was what they were waiting for to get a bunch of bikes out there, so. Um, I think, I think the staffing's getting better. I think it will continue to get better as they figure it out, but um, they are still trying to bring on a few more people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, if I've heard any complaints, it's just that they aren't where, you know, I went to get one and went there.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's first year.
Yeah, and, and growing the number of bikes in the program will help with that as well, so um.
That's been a great program.
How do they, do they have like a shop that they repair the bikes or they repair it remotely?
Yeah, they have uh, leased a warehouse space uh, down at uh, seventeen oh five Airport Road.
I would, I would love to see some more information before rendering an opinion on how many bikes we should grow the program by and how many. More docking stations there should be. I would love to just get some more data on. What that means and what the implications of each are. I think that I would be on board with growing the program, but in. Which way and whether it's more bikes, same number of stations or more bikes and stations and what the implications are. Uh, I'd love to get some more information on that.
Okay, yeah, we can put that together.
I love the idea of growing the program and yeah, certainly love to see the data and see what makes sense. You know, maybe there's a way to partner with some of the local bike shops on. You know, some of the, the companies already have trailers to move bikes around and maybe that helps them out on the kind of the operations and the support side and. Yeah, wonder when you're going to do the mini winter pilot as well.
Mini what?
Winter pilot.
Oh, oh.
They're not answering. Smile into that one.
Has it been uh, Rex that, are they reported to us or is that, that's mostly the hospital problem?
Um. Nah.
We've had a couple reported to us, um, generally very minor, but we have had a couple that we're aware of.
Other questions? Nice job, yeah, thank you. Sustainability. You see the gold star I got? Yeah, you've gotten two or three today. Yeah, I know the uh, for uh, my recycling. Oh, no. Send it to everybody. I got a gold star, you know, uh, yeah.
Yeah, on your upstairs.
Yeah, I'll send you the photo. I'm assuming that's your life. No, no.
Before we move on from e-bikes, I did just want to mention that the Mountain Towns um, group is having a webinar on e-bikes, so they're going to hear from. About the Vale program, Park City and then Denver um, related to their e-bike rebate program, so that webinar is tomorrow at eleven. Um, if anyone is interested, they, there's a, I can send around your registration, so.
Why don't they talk into the winners?
Um, alright, so, um. Happy to answer questions about the information that was in the memo, but I did just want to update everyone that we had um. Meeting with Shamrock today related to the um, plastics pollution ordinance and just the stocking and availability of their products. It was a wonderful conversation. Thank you for getting us together. We're great people there. Um, but we started high level, talked about the ordinance, talked about the intent and the goals and they. Made it very clear to us that they are ready and willing to help. They understood the, the concept and the, the effort. And that they are here to help educate the um, uh, business customers of theirs here in Breckenridge and so. They, they felt like the timing was really good. They've already started doing some of this work related to the state's um. Styrofoam ban, which takes effect a- and ours, I mean, we mirrored it, but the styrofoam ban goes into effect January first. And so they said that, you know, the timing on this discussion and how they're doing their um, outreach this fall to their customers is really good. So, we plan to have that same conversation with the other, uh, you know, US Foods and Cisco as well, um, but that was, it was just a really. Promising conversation and they were um. They were very positive in the fact that they have this availability. They, they're confident in these products and um. They have it available out of their Denver office, so. All good news there. Uh, we're still trying to get meetings with Seven Eleven and City Market, though. That one's been tough. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer questions about the packet.
Questions?
Kirsten, if. A larger company decides not to adhere to our plastic pollution ordinance on July first. What ramifications does the town have? Or if they decide to take um, action against us uh, based on the ordinance? What is the most likely scenario?
Um, so, uh, yeah, that's a good question. I don't have the ordinance up in front of me, but we did put in their enforcement mechanism. That had fines. Um, we have uh, required also when we impose fines. That there's an appeal process to, and that'll, that's a good thing to allow us to make, you know, sure that we are uh, fining appropriately. Um, and that if there's a challenge, it would go to a hearing officer. We also have our general penalty provision that applies to everything, which is. Um, the dollar amount is twenty-six fifty and up to one year in jail, but like, you know, that we almost never exercise our authority under that provision. Um, do you remember the fine amount that we? Put in there? For your head?
I, uh, not off the top of my head because we were looking at what we can do to make it stronger, um.
We're going to revisit this ordinance for sure, so at that point in time, we can start thinking about whether we have the fine amount. Set appropriately or whether it needs to be higher. Uh, you also asked an additional question if they challenged us. I mean, the way they, you know, they're. If we did uh, take enforcement action, that would give someone an opportunity to say that they've been injured and file some sort of claim. Um. Uh, that would probably also first go to a hearing officer and then possibly to, to court, um. But I mean, if we're complying with the state dates, uh, you know, the effective date is January one, twenty twenty-four. If we're not taking action prior to that date, we'll be in good shape for what we did most likely. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
It's fifty dollars for the first violation, a hundred for the second and then three hundred for every violation after that.
Per, per day or per violation?
Um. Per violation.
Okay.
And not more than one penalty imposed within a seven-day period.
You talked about what, you know, maybe we needed to increase that amount.
And what's the threshold for jail time?
It, well, if there's a violation and we bring it through municipal court, we could impose jail time.
Any other questions for Jesse? Thank you.
Thank you.
Housing and childcare?
Getting the chairs.
Yeah, it's like three meetings ago.
Oh, yeah, I noticed that.
Good afternoon, um, we did have packet or um, uh, minutes in your packet for both housing and childcare. I don't know if you had any questions or comments or um, any questions on projects in general. Um, just two quick updates that are not in the um, uh, minutes. Um, reminder that we have the tour on Monday for the um, folks from Denver. We're still working out the final details on the tour. Every time I um, check my email, the actual tour time has gone down and the talking time has gone up, but. We hope we have enough time to actually just make it. But, um, we hope we have enough time to actually just make it. Really? See, I, that's what I thought, um, yesterday. And then today I got an email that there were over fifty, um, folks that were planning on attending.
Folks attending and.
But from Denver, not the locals. It was over fifty without any local folks.
They're Thomas Davidson's coming.
They took three buses. But, you know, it is really changing dramatically.
What time and where, Laurie?
Um, it's, I, as I believe it's starting at ten or ten thirty, I can't remember. Um, they need to be back at the senior center and free to leave at two. Um, so they're planning a little introduction at the beginning. Um, and then I think they had talked with tomorrow, maybe Eric about a little rap at the end. Um, I think we, um, now might have about two hours actually on the bus, which is not a lot of time to go from the senior center to Silverthorn to Barack and back to the senior center. Um, it, it's very tight, but, um, you know, we will do what we can do.
I guess you and I will be on one bus and then we'll swap at some point is what Commissioner Pogue said to me today.
Who's planning on going from council?
I'm tentative. Yeah, I'm going. Go the better. You like.
Invite, so.
It's coming Monday.
Um, is the agenda finalized yet?
Um, it, it, they were working on it last night and then I got a draft this morning, but I think it's changing. I, I, as soon as I have a final, or what we think is a final agenda, I'll get it out to everybody.
Mostly Julie and Dylan or is it tomorrow in the county?
I think it's a little, yeah, I think they're getting input mainly on what they think what had the biggest impact. Somebody that's been impacted by housing that could say a few words. And so they're tweaking as they go. So I think there's, and, and, you know, they're, they're working with us together, so.
We'll probably know Monday morning what we're doing Monday, but I think it's gonna be fine. Um, we have obviously a lot to show them, so it's a matter of how do we do that? Um, the other quick update is, um, just to put this on everybody's radar is, um, we've been talking with, um, Public Works and PD about a closure of Wellington Road to facilitate, um, some infrastructure work that has to happen for the stables. So, um, it's going to be late September. It could be an extended closure, both directions of Wellington. We're trying to sort of minimize that, um, but as we know details, we will start getting that information out.
Locks should be open.
Necessarily, um, yeah.
How to run that sewer pipe down below the creek? Which means they're, it's got, they're made a cut in the road directly across. They gotta dig down below the level, so they'll shut the culvert off, right? Dig below the creek and, and run that pipe.
Another way to do it? Is there another way to go?
Because they would have to do a pump station and the sand district will do a pump station.
That was what, which I said, no.
Everything in our power. I mean, I, this thing cannot extend beyond two weeks and two weeks is too long for me, but.
Too long.
We are going to push so hard that they're, you know, working seven days a week, twelve hours a day out there. Trying to get this thing done. I don't understand why it's taking so long, but.
Where is it going to be exactly?
Right at Staples and Wellington.
Right at Staples at Wellington.
Right, right.
And there's no pipe in Wellington Road they can connect to?
No, the, the pipe, um, well, what serves, um, Wellington and Lincoln Park is not adequate. Um, either in the location or the sizing to accommodate the stables, because that's what they had originally preferred to do was just hook in. Um, but there are problems with those sand district lines as they are. So, um, yeah, this is why we got to hook in down by Little Red.
But, but there's no, so there's nothing in Wellington itself that they could go farther through our property? More clo- closer to the BOEC or closer to the Excel Tower plant and then cut in Wellington there instead of having to go down below the river.
I know. I don't believe there is. I think that's why we're doing what we have to do. But I'll check for sure. We're checking every option. I mean, we've been working with engineering and public works, so trying to figure out the least impactful.
So.
We will, we want to let you know because at some point we want to start app marketing this, but I also think we need more answers before we start pushing it out and doing it. I mean, we know it's going to be a huge impact on.
Everybody.
Their school buses, people in general. I mean, it's going to be huge shift in traffic patterns for that. So we just have to make the progress development.
Right.
I, I'd like to just make, just see if there's any way possible to have a non-motorized egress, maybe through Vista Point, up over the bridge, down Wellington that way. If, you know, whatever, if there's some way people can get together and get to get to town, you know, from Wellington, either on foot or on bike, um, somehow if they had to cut through the, uh, the corkscrew or whatever.
They could go through Vista Point because there's a footbridge down there, but cars are probably.
No, uh, yeah, but cars, that's going to suck no matter what. But I just, you know, if perhaps if we have it somehow to have some, at least some pedestrian and bike traffic.
Yeah.
To get through.
I think there's a route for that, but.
I hope so.
There's not. Wow.
A bit more information to keep you, uh, upbeat.
Um, if we could put out Todd Rankin's cell phone number for questions for people, that would be good. I'd like that.
Uh, all right, anything else? Cool.
Thanks.
Thank you.
News?
Yeah.
Uh, committee reports, there were nothing, uh, events.
Was no meeting.
Finances, financials. Got a new kid?
Oh.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be sitting in front of you.
Who are you?
My name is Al Griffin and I'm your revenue compliance auditor.
And he's looking right at you.
Well, I'm looking at who's answering, asking the questions.
What's a clear and, they're president. No, there's some sort of term you use, uh, the compliance guy used last time.
Oh, you're thinking of the auditor.
That was the auditor.
Clear and, clear, clear and clean. Then. Nice to meet you, Kyle.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, so I'm just going to go briefly through July financials and then I'll pass the floor on to Kyle, who, um, did a lot of research for you guys on inflation. Um, so July is, as you know, is mainly, um, reflective of June tax collections. Um, we are three point seven above budget, um, in the excise fund. Uh, sales tax is one point one million above last year. Um, accommodations tax is flat to last year and real estate transfer tax is below by a million. Overall, our year-to-date, um, net taxable sales came in flat, um, in comparison to last year and ahead of, by thirty-eight percent ahead of June, year-to-date twenty nineteen.
When you say flat, what do you mean?
Well, it's a, it's negative one point eighteen.
So it's pretty much the same.
It's flat. I, yeah, I mean, negative one percent is.
It's flat.
Yes. Um, for the month of June, um, just looking at the month of June net taxable sales, again, I would say flat. It's a negative two perc- percent compared to last year, um, and thirty-four percent ahead of twenty nineteen. Um, real estate transfer tax came in ahead of budget by a hundred and seventy-six thousand. Um, I did add those pie charts that were requested in last session, um, went back to historical two thousand sixteen. I didn't see any major changes between the categories, um, really to note of. I guess the biggest change would be, and this is as of year-to-date of July. Um, and I guess really the only, the biggest change is, uh, twenty twenty-one year-to-date interval ownership was sixteen percent. And twenty twenty-three is almost double at thirty percent. Um, but other than that, uh, you can see the pie charts are really similar throughout the whole, the, all the years. Um, as far as our summary for revenues and expenditures, it, it's very similar to last session. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, but other than that, I'm, I'll pass on the floor to Kyle, who did a lot of research on, um, historical trends for inflation.
Thanks, Pam. So the next three slides, if you're looking at, uh, one oh four through one oh six, are an attempt to really enter a question that had come up in prior council meetings, which is what has the effect of inflation been on our net taxable sales within the town? And I'd like to begin that discussion by looking at, uh, an inflation history of the past five years. So from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, um, you know, we're used to a two percent inflation environment generally per year. We were actually a little bit below two percent in those years. But in late twenty twenty-one, we started seeing increased inflation, uh, in the broad economy as well as here. And it ended up at four point seven percent that year. Uh, in twenty twenty-two was our, uh, inflation soared and exacerbated, um, up to eight percent. Um, in the middle of twenty twenty-two, in Q two, the Fed started trying to increase interest rates to control that inflation. And hence projecting forward into twenty twenty-three, their expectation is that we'll have about somewhere around five percent inflation for the year. Now, if you took all of that into a summary perspective, your dollar in twenty nineteen is now worth eighty cents today. And you can think of that another way. You know, if this pen was a dollar in twenty nineteen, now it's roughly a dollar twenty. So, um, your, I think that, uh, BTO presented earlier, we had a, about a twenty percent, um, net change and, and that's in line with what we're seeing here. If you move forward to, uh, one oh five, what we presented here in the upper table is reported net taxable sales. And this information has previously been reported to council. Um, it is what we reported for twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-two. Twenty twenty-three figures from January through June are, um, what we are currently reporting. All of those cells which are shaded light blue are in fact a projection based upon budget. So we expect that net taxable sales for the year this year will end up somewhere around, uh, nine hundred eleven million dollars within the town. Moving down into the graph below, that is just a different representation of the information in the table above. And there are some key things that I think are worth considering here. Uh, this graph shows us that over the course of the past five years, uh, despite inflationary environments and a pandemic, our flows of business within the town are remarkably consistent. So say when you compare, um, all of our marches, those are all quite high in terms of net taxable sales. Um, we always see a dip down in May. We level out through the remainder of the summer and then we see rise again, um, in November as we hit our winter season. And if you would like to have any further clarification, please stop me at any time. Moving forward to page one oh six, um, I really want to focus in on this graph. The tables above depict are, are just different representations of the same information in the graph. So this shows us a scenario wherein, what if we only had two percent inflation every year since twenty nineteen? Um, that's depicted in the green line that you see below. And it would end up with us showing net taxable sales this year of eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, or eighty, eight hundred eighty-four million dollars, excuse me. And the orange line above shows our current projection of nine hundred and eleven million dollars, as I had mentioned earlier. Um, another way to think about this is that, you know, the difference between nine eleven and eight eighty-four is about three percent. Um, and that three percent plus the two percent expected makes up our five percent inflation projection that we saw back on slide one oh four. The net effect of all of this is the area between the green line and the orange line, which is about ninety million dollars worth of net taxable sales. That's attributable to inflation above two percent over the last five years. Any questions so far?
Got it. I got it, dude.
Yeah.
Um, you know, an additional question that we were given to research and we are still researching is how are we doing in comparison to other, um, local mountain towns or regional mountain towns? And I am working on that answer for you. It is still to be determined because currently we don't have good comparable data, uh, in two ways. We are publishing quite frequently what our net taxable sales figures are or what our tax revenues are monthly, but that's not the case for some other mountain towns. So we don't have the same timeline. And we also don't know yet whether the way that we are comparing or presenting our taxable or sales tax revenues are the same way that other towns are. So I want to suss all of that information out before we present it to you. Any questions on all of that?
Have you gotten the cast material that we, okay.
Got that.
Mm-hmm.
Stuff, thank you. It really is.
Happy to share it with you.
Does that answer everybody's questions that we had?
Yeah, that twenty percent number is really helpful just to kind of be like, all right, how are we looking compared to twenty nineteen? Are we up more than twenty percent? We are, so that's, yeah, that's good work and really helpful. Thank you.
Great. I'll turn back over to Pam.
No questions?
Thank you.
Uh, town attorney update? Got any?
Just quickly, thought I'd comment on the governor's executive order. Just a lot of people don't know what an executive order is. It's very limited in scope. And so this is on the housing, um, that he released yesterday, binding all of the state agencies. Um, it, it would be a separation of powers issue to go broader than that. Um, so I, you know, it'll be interesting to see if he tries to amend it and make it more broad than it is right now. Uh, the other thing is, um, Dominic Moreno, who sponsored the land use bill two thirteen, has now left the Senate and is, um, joined the Denver mayor's staff. So, uh, the main bill sponsor who shepherded the whole thing into the other areas now.
That's interesting.
So who fills his seat then?
How does that get, uh, how, it's a vacant, so there'll have to be an appointment, I think? Don't quote me on that. I'll follow up with you.
Party, yeah.
Yeah, appointment from the party.
Cause he was very active.
It, it's usually within a number of days before an election. So if it's in that period, it, it could be an appointment from the party, but I will follow up with you. I'm sorry, did you?
No, he was very active.
And he was, he was collaborative, yeah. Former Commerce City Council member, so he had a, a big role.
It's really interesting. Thank you. Uh, approval of banner artwork.
Yeah, we're just going to see if you have any questions. The packet was very self-explanatory. The memo was very, uh, good. So what's the timeline when those are going out?
Uh, go to print on Thursday, you get them back and then, uh, they'll go up September fourteenth, I believe. And they'll be up from September fifteenth to October fifteenth for Hispanic Heritage Month.
Sweet.
All right.
Yeah, I think it's cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, and every year we'll reuse them.
For the next five years.
And we had a diverse group working on this. This was the social equity committee that.
You happy with them?
Yeah, I was really spearheaded by the Social Equity Commission, the Celebrate Diversity Subgoal Group. And most important, the members of Hispanic Heritage really were happy with that end result.
Great job. I love it. I'm psyched.
All right.
We're having trouble with our email.
She knows. I texted her already. She's taking care of it.
Oh, Labato, Le- Lebrado, who's it, what's his name? Librado, who's it, what's his name? Liberto, he, he walked me through it today. Finally got it. It was like a, it was a nightmare.
Yeah, town manager recruitment process.
Have we done a talent search?
Are you gonna apply?
We'll help you apply. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In your packet, I included a, a proposal for the process to fill the impending opening of town manager with Rick's retirement. So we wanted to outline the process. In case you didn't know, some of you look surprised. Just kidding. I wanted to outline the process. I did work with Rick on this and put some dates to what we believe could happen between now and the end of the year. It does happen quickly with the timelines, but we would post it for three days. We do have a requirement to post our finalist. It will be posted internally and then we'll post our finalists for fourteen days publicly. Then we would begin the interviews, interviewer interviews, and then begin talking about employment contract after your selection. So I was wondering if you have any questions about this process, any additions or anything else you'd like to see?
I wonder why you took so much time off. So this is something we always have to do.
Correct.
Everybody good with this?
Great. If you think of anything else, let me know.
Thank you.
Leaves, yes, leave his pens behind.
Cause they used to be worth a dollar.
You know what? If he just pays the delta.
Okay, we're good. Yeah, twenty, twenty cents for each pen, cause I'm taking what Kyle said to the bank.
We're gonna have to check his pockets. I'm afraid he's gonna walk up with a bunch of stuff. Uh, net zero density calculation code amendment. Sarah Crump.
Good afternoon. He likes the same as us.
We all do.
Um, so this afternoon I have before you a proposed code amendment for net zero energy buildings. We recently did a development review of some new residential proposed net zero housing. And we realized we really don't want to penalize these particular structures when they are achieving net zero. Because the current best practice for construction is you build an exterior wall, you have an insulation cavity and then another wall in, in interior. It's much thicker than traditional construction techniques. If we were to include all of that in our current density calculation, this takes away from livable space. We don't want to penalize net zero construction when they're reaching our energy goals by taking away livable space that's, uh, would be considered density. So we're proposing this code change. It would only be applied to buildings that achieve net zero where instead of measuring from the exterior wall in, you would measure from a midpoint of that insulation cavity. So they're not getting to, you know, a freebie completely. They, part of that insulation cavity still has to count towards the density. But measuring from a midpoint in and including that area for the density calculation. So there'd be a couple code amendments. A new density definition for net zero buildings and then a new definition for what is a net zero energy building. Questions?
Makes total sense.
Is this, uh, does this have a limited scope? Like, is it just single family dwellings? Is it duplexes, multiplex, commercial?
Any building that would achieve net zero, so it would be applied to residential and commercial construction.
What would be the impact if you put it into practical sense? If it's a two thousand square foot house, how much bigger does that house get with this?
We were seeing in like some calculations for Stables Village, for example, I don't want to use specifics because they have active, active applications. But between like seven and ten percent of the, like, is the area that was not allowed to be livable space in their cavity. So half of that would be now excluded from the density calculation. Cause it could make a difference, but not a huge amount changed. And I, we're, as staff, we're not worried about a huge increase of massing in these buildings just because all of these applications still have to comply with building envelopes, setbacks, overall density, they're still capped. So that's really not a concern for most.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, you touched on it. I think the key's gonna be to have tight definitions of net zero. And are we designing for it or where are we achieving it?
Achieving it, um, they would have to complete at the end of, um, before getting their certificate of occupancy. They'd have to perform at net zero through testing.
Yeah, cause in the memo, a couple places it designed for, so I, yeah. I think all that stuff will, I mean, the devils can be in the details with that stuff, so. But I'm conceptually good with it.
Okay, we will work with Kirsten and come back with the first reading at some point soon.
Perfect. Thank you. Alright, um, quick, quick five. We're back. EGV PK Gold Rush Lot Discussion.
Go to it.
Alright, thank you, Mayor and Council. In your packet is a short memo outlining two issues that have been, we're, we're gonna discuss today regarding the BGB proposal. One is the location for housing and parking structure. Looking at both the North Gondola Lot and the North Gold Rush Lot, those options there. And then secondly, we have a, an issue regarding that Eric had asked earlier about is in terms of will a roundabout fit at Ski and Ski Hill Road and Park? And so there's a configuration that was provided in your packet on that that we'll discuss as well. Since we've, um, these, these drawings were pulled together a week or so ago by Mike's crew, including Bill Campy. They've made some revisions and to those plans. And so you're gonna see some of that. Mike's gonna take you through a presentation that shows you a little more further thinking on this, uh, based on some discussions we've had about parking counts on the actual lots and that, which we can get into in a little while longer. But at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Mike and he can kind of take you through the PowerPoint that we have here.
From Brett Cran vacations, thanks for your time. Thanks for having me. So wanted to, as part of this process with these six different parcels, work through the parcels that pertain specifically to workforce housing today to create some clarity on that. And I will just say that it's been confusing would be a inaccurate, maybe even an understatement, try and parse through all the different numbers. I'm glad Jeffrey had the primer on the taxes, so he can be up to speed and like, numbers is his game, I know that. So I'm, I'm relieved that that's part of the deal. We wanted to faithfully and honestly answer the questions that were posed at the last meeting about the possibility of different, about the roundabout at Ski Hill and Park, about location of housing and to provide our assessment. It's modulated multiple times since we talked last in July and even the last ten days from when I originally talked with Mark and Chris and then talked with those two along with Rick to get the numbers straight. I think we've got it and it's confusing to me and I'm decent with numbers. So if you get to a place, place where you're not there, please stop me. Cause I, I don't want to make the assumption that we're on the same page if we're not, so. Maybe I can just, who's got the computer? Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, cool. Okay, so we'll cut to the chase. The roundabout at Park and Ski Hill doesn't work. But I'll show you why. We had Chris, Chris Durler from Tetra Check go and we asked him per Eric's request about the feasibility of this to take a look. And so this is about as faint as what these buttons are down here. But you can see if you follow the cursor, this is Ski Hill Road coming from the ski area. And this would be the location of the roundabout per his engineering assessment. You can see this lane right here coming from Ski Hill or if, I don't know if it's called Ski Hill or Lincoln there, but either way, it chops off a part of First Bank right there. Over here, this lane chops off a part of River Mountain Lodge. This lane chops off a part of Park Place. This lane just takes part of the sidewalk. So unless we want to rebuild those buildings. And then this analysis here, this graph shows the current versus the required grade of Ski Hill Road, I think primarily in this section in here. Is that right, guys? Yeah, so there is a massive regrade to Ski Hill Road. And for those of you who recall, at the base of Peak Eight, we had to, we put a bridge in between seven and eight and then we had to regrade Ski Hill Road between that bridge and the admin building. When we got CEO of Building Three at Grand Colorado and Peak Eight, similar kind of situation that to bring that road up to grade, you have to bring, you have to be able to create the entry path into the roundabout at the appropriate grade, cause that's a state highway. And so it, it chops off buildings and the grade, the grading doesn't work.
Totally works.
Pardon? It's a go.
This looks like a two lane roundabout. Did you look at a one lane roundabout?
No, um, and no, this is what we've got in, in terms of what we asked them to do. Um, I think that probably designed to be consistent with the inflow and outflow out of the Watson and Park. But I don't know, I don't know the rationale for four versus two to your question. I don't know if it needs to be four to handle it. I don't, I don't know. I shouldn't, I shouldn't even speculate.
Dick, to your point, I talked with Shannon Smith earlier today and she can elaborate on this. But she did indicate that uh, one lane is something we should look at in terms of modeling. She's still indicated there's probably problems even if you just put one lane in there, cause you can see how much of First Bank is taken up. I mean, both lanes cover that area, but it's something we probably should have modeled just to.
And the other piece, or go ahead, Graham.
We did look at Graham Frank from BGB. We did look at the single lane. It's a level service F and it doesn't meet C dot standards. So we can get you that information as well for sure. But we didn't put it on the screen because it was at that level.
In, in case that we ever had an opportunity at the First Bank building, I, I think that's something that we should not ignore in terms of master planning and in bigger picture stuff. You know, retail banking is. Yeah, and so I, I just think this is, this is such a problematic intersection right here that anything that can be done. You know, I, I think we need a you know, just, just an exhaustive study on alternatives, whether it's roundabout or something else, you know. You know, turn lengths of turn lanes and, you know, to help with queuing and, and you know, I just, anything and everything can be done. And I'm not necessarily thinking this would all be on you guys. I think it could be a partnership. This could be something we could work together on possibly, but it's just, it's a problematic intersection. We all know that. And just, it's gonna be worse as we add more density up the hill. And so anything and everything that can be done, just an exhaustive study of, let's not stop now and let's just look at other alternatives that are possibly.
Well, I, I think when we come back and talk about the residential density at the base of the mountain, we'll have a discussion. We're, we met with the ski area to talk about and internally with us to try and look at holistic, you know, kind of organic kind of solutions in terms of versus hardscape kind of things. And so I think there are opportunities to mitigate the up and down the Ski Hill Road by non-winter recreational users, right? You've got to get people up to the ski mountain, but I think that, I think there are ways that we can manage staff parking better, things like that. And so I think there's opportunities to, just like with housing, right? Where it's, whether you, we got a, an arsenal of different programs where it's five units here and fifty units there. It all adds together. And so we're, we're in tune with that, but I'm not an engineer. I just, this, this is what it is. I mean, I don't, I don't.
Tell you, Dick, we could just get scary to get rid of the drop off up there.
That'll help.
That would help a lot.
I mean, I think any and every way we can move the needle, Mike, I'm in full agreement with you. We need to do. And, and you know, this, this is, I view this as a partnership approach, depending on how, what the scope of the work is.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I do too. And I, I paid to get this done at your request. I mean, it's, it's, you know, we, um, we wanted, we're community first and we want to continue to do that. And so there's, I agree that there's a, a problem here, but some of these problems are legacy problems that, you know, they've been there for a, a lot. This is foreseeable, I suppose, you know.
The, the more building up there, which I think you guys have been a part of a lot of, the worse it's gotten, so.
Yeah, I mean.
I think we're in this together and we can't stop now. I mean, I don't think we can stop studying this intersection.
We're working, we've met with the ski area. We're working hard to be able to provide, you know, obvious gains to the road conditions. I, I'm, am I, we can, are we, am I gonna satisfy you? I can bet everything I got, the answer's no to that, right? But I'm gonna try and get close.
Close to an F. I mean, that intersection's close to an F already, so. You know, it's, 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 I don't think the, the community assessed, but, but I don't want to argue with it. I, I just, I think this, we just need to keep going.
We're going to. This is, again, I, I want to say, you asked us a question in a collaborative process. It's my responsibility to try and enter that, answer that in an honest fashion. And we'd hired an expert and this is the assessment they come back with. And so I gotta roll with that for now. That, that doesn't exclude other solutions down the road. But I think it does exclude this one, so. Okay, um, so existing conditions, we're talking about, there's the Gondola, there's parcel one, which is North Gondola, parcel two, North Gold Rush. I'm gonna try and say one and two today, because every time we talk about this internally, we all butcher North Gondola, North Gold Rush, and we're like, wait, did you mean this or did you mean that? And so I'm gonna say one and two. One is Gondola, two is Gold Rush. Okay, which is consistent with the other presentations that we've done relative to these parcels of land that we're talking about. I'm just, I, I know that I'm senile and somewhat and I'll screw it up at some point inadvertently. So, yeah. So existing conditions, so the town and the ski resort have a two thousand three parking agreement, which controls with respect to what I'm able to do. Cause the agreement says that there'll be fifteen hundred and sixty total parking spaces on the four lots in town, which would be South Gold Rush, Nor, I'm sorry. South, I already did it. South Gondola, Lot One, Lot Two and South Gold Rush, okay? So those four lots total fifteen sixty and it's triggered by the development. This is, this is from the parking agreement that says in the event of any development, the ski resort will be required to provide all incremental parking by town code to get the total of fifteen sixty spaces. I'm not a party to this agreement, that agreement between the town and the ski resort. I am bound by the agreement, but I'm not a party to it. So I can't, you know, I can't represent anything with respect to one of the other parties. I'm in no position to authorize anything on this. I just have to comply with it. And that's, that's my reality. That's my reality. So the agreement controls, there's five hundred and fifty spaces that were allocated and memorialized for the South Gondola when you guys did the structure on that site. Today, there's six hundred and ten cars that actually park regularly on the North Gondola or Site One. Six, ten regularly parked there. It's striped at five twenty five, but when the snow gets on it, they consolidate. And that's per the parking revenues from interstate, et cetera. It's consistently six, ten is what is effectively on that site.
I think we need to use code.
But we don't.
Well, hold on.
We don't know if it's striped decoder.
Right.
Research that and.
So I'm not sure.
I mean, that's just anecdotal to me. I don't see any data on that. So I, I think we need to use code to verify. You know, what, what is the code number and that should be the number.
Yeah, I, I just got the six, ten from, from the parking data. Um. I, I, I know what it's striped at. I know what parks. I don't know that one is code or one isn't code. I just know what the data is. And, and so the data had, oops, well, that did work there. So this is, when I said confusion, this is one of the reasons why, because there's conflicting numbers on this site. And so it dovetails into. If you have to have fifteen sixty when there's development and you don't have a. You're not sure if the number is five twenty-five or six, ten or six fifty for that matter, right? That could be there by code. It is, it's, it's hard to, to resolve the math because you, the starting point is not. Rock solid. I think that the empirical evidence as the collection of paid parking revenue says six hundred and ten, which is why I'm going with that. For no other reason than that's what's parked there. So a total of eleven sixty, that's five fifty plus six, ten equals eleven sixty. It's very convenient because. Fifteen sixty less the eleven sixty is an easy four hundred. That's the easiest part of the math that's going to happen so far today. That means, what that means, and because we're going to develop on South. Gold Rush Town Homes, there's a hundred and one parking spaces on there today.
South, that's three.
That's number three. Yep. Um, we're going to move those over to parcel two, um, which currently has two hundred and thirty-five spaces. On parcel number two. Okay, but we need four hundred to be compliant. The development triggers. The cure of the parking agreement to fifteen sixty. That's what, that's, again, that's what I'm bound to. So four hundred are required on Gold Rush. The Gold Rush needs a podium in order to park four hundred cars, needs a parking deck to do that. And I'll show you, this is, this is from Bill Campy, our architect. This is. This slide was designed with respect to housing, so just ignore these gray boxes for now. This red dash line here. Outlines the existing paved surface area of the parcel two. I'm going to speak this slowly, the North Gold Rush Lot, okay? The, inside the red. Is the existing parking. And it's existing at two hundred and thirty-five spaces. We can park this, this diagram shows three hundred and twelve. Spaces on this level here. Remember, we need to get to four hundred per the agreement. If we remove, in our guesstimate, if we remove all of the gray, which would be is the housing, so this was strictly parking. It's going to come in at around three fifty. So in any iteration, fulfillment of. The, the parking agreement between the town and the ski resort requires us to build a podium to get to four hundred to deliver on the fifteen sixty. That's an absolute for us because we were just commencing development. We have to get to four hundred. On that one parcel, because there's already the six, using the six, ten number on North Gondola. You solve to four hundred, solving to four hundred with the surface is only at a plus or minus three fifty, you have to build a podium. To fulfill the four hundred, so the agreement is fulfilled by the ski resort and their obligation to the community. So that's, that's, I'm just kind of, if, if we went with five twenty-five, then that has to get bigger. Right? And so this four hundred number of, of winter recreational is, that's the least it's going to be, but it could be more than that. Okay, and so, but what that means is that a podium is required. A platform to put cars on it to make this agreement whole.
No matter what, no matter what.
It, it's going here. This is the, this is the place for it. This is where the cure is. This is how, this is the, this is the realization of the agreement signed twenty years ago, maybe by your dad. Maybe not by then, but. Yeah.
That's right.
Um, and so this is. This is one hundred percent compliance with that agreement. Bound to.
Can I say so?
Yeah, please.
Now you understand where Mike's going. As you're listening to this, what I want you to think about is. I'm not going to let forty or fifty parking spaces. Dictate where we build house. Let's build house. We need to determine where do we think? The housing will best serve. You and the community and what we're doing. And then it's not Mike's job to worry about the parking agreement. That's our job. But I, I don't think forty or fifty, assuming that the six, ten number is right and all that, I don't think forty or fifty spacious. Spaces. Should dictate. Where we decide to build our housing and do this. Because it's just, to me, it's a much bigger question than that. Now, I understand that if. Were held to that, it, it takes, uh, dictates what Mike can do financially. But it doesn't. There's other things we might be able to do to address that. But I don't know. So as you're looking at this. You know, I want you to also keep an open mind because the biggest question I want to get answered from you all today. Is where are we going to build the house? Which side of the road are we going to do it?
And, and thank you. And. I, I look at this agreement the same way I look at the building code, development code that the community has, which is. We have density, we get the rulebook from the town and we go play by the rulebook. It's the same thing that I have to do with respect to this parking. The rulebook is the agreement. And I'm not in a position to vacate or, or modulate on that. Document. That's not my, that's not my purview. It's, it's yours. It's between you and the ski resort. I have nothing to do with that. But the reality of the parking agreement, which I'm bound to, says that it, that parking agreement drives the need to have a podium on. Parcel number two. That has been. We have been deep in this Gondola. North, South Gold Rush for four plus years between the previous entitlement and this. I'm intimately familiar with the, some of the nuances and a lot of the different arguments. But this is, this is where this stands to satisfy this is it's four hundred cars in this lot as it exists today to be fully compliant. So.
If I can just.
Please.
Interject. And actually it's more than that. The parking. Because, because Mike's identifying six hundred and. Ten spaces is what they park on North Gondola. Actually, you know, Chris and I went out and counted all the spaces last week and they park actually, it's. Closer to five thirty. Is what they park with the striping there that's there right now. And the parking agreement actually right now says. That four hundred and ninety spaces are to be provided on the North Gondola Lot. And five hundred and twenty are required to be. Provided over on the, uh, North Gold Rush or both Gold Rush Lots. So. Sorry that, I know that's just confusing things any, even more, but what's that saying is they actually should be providing over five hundred spaces over here. On the North Gold Rush.
That was the signed agreement with the.
An agreement from two thousand and four.
It also allows that to move.
Yes.
Being the lots. Done when they were both dirt parking lots.
Well, we used to talk five fifty, six fifty. And then three. Three forty or whatever on Gold Rush.
The biggest number is the fifteen.
Right.
That's what we just, yeah. Between those three lots.
When we had the previous entitlement, it was clear cut. Because you had five hundred and fifty on the South Gondola Lot. Math is simple. That means we build a big garage across the street with ten, one thousand and ten cars. Five fifty, ten, ten, fifteen, sixty, done. That's not true. That's not the case today because we're not vacating those lots and consolidating into that number that's the solved to number. And so we need to know what's on these lots and there's. I can agree with what Mark and Chris did because I flew my drone without a flight plan the other day to count the actual stripe spots too. And so their number is accurate.
Have the officer come down and write down the ticket.
No, 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 it was, it was, it was my son.
Mike, why'd you say that it's an abs? When you said it's an absolute that a podium is needed on Gold, North Gold Rush Parcel Two. Why do you, like? Why is that an absolute? When a podium in Parcel One. North Gondola would satisfy the same.
Great, great question. And so the deal that we have with Vail Resorts on this global deal is that. BGV today owns North Gondola. As part of the negotiated deal, BGV is going to return that lot to the ski resort. And so the only place that I can put it. To solve to the parking structure is on Parcel Two on Gold Rush. I don't have. The authority to. Locate a podium on their land.
Do you have the authority to build workforce housing on their land?
I, I don't without their, without their approval.
Station. Does this need to happen? It sounds like.
I think that, I think it's, you asked, you asked a fair question and I think that I wanted to. That I can, I can stop and just right here, um, and just go to the Gold Rush stuff, but you asked a question about the viability and. It, it. The math triggers a podium on the South Gold Rush and where this is going. That in order to fulfill and answer your request about North Gondola is that you need a second podium across the street. And that is what drives a stake in the heart of the, of the housing on North Gondola. Is the second podium. It's a second upper deck of parking in order to maintain. Not only the fifteen sixty, but when you build housing, you got to park those residents. And so you have to add to the fifteen sixty, the number of parking spaces required by code for the workforce housing. So as I sit here today, all I can do is say I can build on the Gold Rush and I have to put the podium there. But trying to be. Honest with your question, which is a fair question, why not over here? I, we go through and we take a look at that. And so we say, and I was just, I would. I'd amplify that even just a little bit more that the site constraints, if we go back, if you look at this drawing right here, Jay. All of this land over here, part of which is on this hillside right here, which we excavate. There's a massive gain of surface area on this lot. For surface parking. Contrast that with the North Gondola Lot. All you're doing is eliminating parking spaces because that's where the housing is going to go. So when you eliminate those spaces, you have to go up to repark those same cars. And so if you put housing in North Gondola, you have to put a podium over there as well. But you can't build a big enough podium on North Gondola to solve this problem too. And I just, I just wanted to make sure you guys knew this stuff because I, I just don't want to go, well, I can't do it. And then. Like when I talked with Kelly before, it's like, I think you said to me, you have a responsibility to future councils to kind of vet. And make sure that, you know, all of the questions are asked and answered in a thoughtful way. And so I think your question was a good one. And so we tried to. Answer that. As best we can. So. So. On six, ten, we've been talking about that. The workforce housing with displaced, this is North Gondola now. The workforce housing, this is the what if, this is the answer to the what if. The residents also need to park. And so. Um, it would force a podium on this site and the site map here. So we drew this as well. Per the request, even though we will not end up owning this land. But you asked a fair question. I think it deserves an honest answer. The red line again. Shows the existing parking. And so you can see where the gray is for the housing, Jay. That's all displaced parking. That's a hundred and fifty spaces. So we have to maintain the six, ten on that lot. And if I go to the next levels, you have to, you have to replace what you lose with the housing. And then you have to add for the residence of the housing. That's a deck that's this size. Here's the Gondola building right here. There's not room to make this deck bigger. Which then forces a deck across, that, that deck across the street is still a legitimate consideration. And. To, to Rick's point, I'm not in a position to, to discuss. Or modulate that agreement anyway. All I'm here to say is what I can and can't do. And what I can do with the rules that are in front of me is solve the parking on Gold Rush.
So this example here gets you to within forty spaces, do you think?
Yes, because if you didn't build a podium across the street. Then you'd have say three hundred and fifty, whatever that's striped out at on grade. And then you'd have this.
And that's without a podium on.
This is a podium. This right here is a podium. There's a ramping right here.
Number one has a podium.
One has a, one has a podium and two has a podium. Because two.
Get within forty if you eliminated the podium on two. Is that what I'm understanding?
More or less, yeah, you can get close to it.
Would that include doing the cut into the hillside to expand the surface parking?
I believe that it, it does some of that. I mean, you know, there's only so far we can cut because you have to pound these massive nails and retaining wall and. We build a hugely expensive retaining wall on the backside of building one at GCA and there. I mean, it's, it's a. It's a miles worth of effort to gain an inch kind of a, kind of a deal.
But it's less cut than if you were building housing and a podium over there.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean.
That's a big cut.
It, it, if you wanted to have five hundred housing units on there and parking, it'd be a massive cut. We get, that would start turning economically unfeasible too.
How tall would the podium be on number one?
This is the second, this is a, this is one level up off of grade. Like say twelve feet, ten, twelve feet, but the housing's higher than that. Because the housing is two to three stories. Either on either site, the housing's. To Rick's earlier point about a location. That. As things sit today. We, we, we got to a place where we realized we needed to reverse engineer. To the unit count for workforce housing. And by that, I mean that. There's a physical limitation with the podiums and the surface spaces of how many cars you can actually park. So when you satisfy the fifteen sixty, you say, how many other cars can you park? And that number. With the podium is a hundred and one. That drove a recalibration of the units we would put for workforce housing. We, we had originally said in workforce housing, up to three hundred beds. The reality is that I'll show you eighty-five units because all we can provide is an incremental hundred and one parking spaces between, on that deck. Where there, there's only that, there's that much limitation to the. Hundred and eighty-one.
So we're on to numbers now because.
I'm, I'll get there in a second. Sorry. So this was, again, this is the elevation, shows a, a long row of housing there and you can see the two decks of parking, Dick. There, there's the ramp coming up on that one. So it's not an option because the second podium will be. Eight, ten million dollars plus. I mean, it's, you guys built parking, they're expensive. I mean, whether they're. Fifty thousand a space, forty thousand a space, seventy thou, I don't even know what the town spent per new space, but I know it was. It's a rather daunting number. And that's what makes this. Economically unfeasible. Not only do we have the infrastructure subsidy, but. When you put rents into the units and we're going to sell the apartment, that the idea is to sell the apartment complex or the workforce housing at the end of the day. We can't sell it for a price sufficient to cover the cost to build just the structure itself. And so we, in addition to providing the infrastructure of the podium and the roundabout. At French and Park, we also have to eat some of the loss of what we can sell it for versus what it costs us to build it. So that's another component of subsidy if you guys. Start thinking about that.
Well, and there's also. The. Thing we're, we haven't mentioned yet that you have no control over and that's parking agreement. That means going back to Vail and renegotiating it down, which I don't. I mean, that. I don't know where that goes. My, my, I, I would have a serious concern renegotiating, renegotiating fifteen sixty with Skiria.
I. Not my call.
I don't know what they would say. They may be very hesitant. They may not. I.
I'm assuming they'll be hesitant.
Yeah, I, I don't know after. Seeing how often our structure was full this year, they may not.
But I also don't want to get into a, an agreement where we give them forty spaces in our stretch.
Well, here, yeah, here's what I, I, you know, I think. Maybe it's important to know, you know, that we all are on the same page with the history of that agreement. You know, the, the history of that agreement was. Collaborative, your dad did it.
History was Dave Hinton said, why don't we?
Great deal.
The history was Dave Hinton was sitting here in a meeting and said. We need to memorialize this and that's how it happened.
Yeah, but it came from the concept that, that town was going to split the cost of the Gondola. And the ski back with the ski area. Which the town invested somewhere between twelve and fifteen million dollars. Into that agreement. And, you know, the, the, the delta there is depending on what you include and what you don't. It's a lot of money in two thousand and three dollars. As we knew from Dave's inflation discussion today. Tell us probably in an hour.
End of the wicked cheap back then.
You know, but it was twelve to fifteen million that we invested and this is what we got for it. So yes, there certainly needs to be value.
Yeah.
If, if we waive some of these spaces, it's. If, if we waive some of these spaces, it's workforce housing's not cheap. You know, we've spent million, tens of millions on it.
I would.
Kind of echo with what Rick said. I mean, I don't want to cut off our nose despite our face when it comes to. If we're talking forty cars. What, yeah, so I, I agree, agree with both of you, but I just wanna throw that out there.
I think that for us, no matter how you slice it. The physical constraints, if we reverse engineer into workforce housing, which is what the point of this discussion ultimately is, is that. There's only so many parking spaces in today's environment with fifteen sixty that we can physically put and that. Then determines, it's determinative on the number of units you get. When I was here before, you know, you, I, I heard universally, that sounds like too much program on those sites, either site. The, one of the nice things that's happened with this is that the parking counts. Accomplish your goal right away. Out of the chute, it says, we're gonna go from, we could do up to three hundred down to a hundred and eighty-one beds. Hundred nineteen units down to eighty-five. And so. Right out of the get go and we figure out, start that some of these, you know, Tetris pieces with the, with the math, we go, oh, this, this drives the housing. Can't say, let's build three hundred units or a hundred units or whatever. You just can't arbitrarily pick a number of units if you can't park them. And so the parking agreement and the, the offshoots of that are determinative in terms of the amount of housing that you can. Put on these sites. So proposed condition, um, like I showed you before, that. Surface area on North Gold Rush parcel two. There's more dirt than there is, there's additional dirt that there's not in North Gondola. So we can make the surface area bigger. Um, and we can make the podium a bit bigger in order to, we wouldn't build a podium of just fifty cars, right? We would build a podium big enough to accommodate the residents in addition to those fifty cars. And so. All in on the South Gold Rush, we'd have five hundred cars, five hundred and one cars parked on south, uh, uh, on parcel two. North Gold Rush. Strike that.
I mean, you're in our structure.
Nine oh eight.
And so you talk about total, right?
Not the surface, just structure itself. Five hundred's a big structure.
But again, two thirds of that's on the ground. And then the balance would be hidden by the buildings, right? As you drive down Park Avenue. So we would, we, we think that the site constraint is eighty-five units, um, as Bill has. Done his magic on this, that is fifty-three studios and thirty-two four bedrooms results in a hundred and eighty-one bedrooms. Um, the studios, we know empirically from B G V that if you're past. Twenty-five or twenty-six, you want your own place. If you're just here for the season, hoping maybe to hang on for the next season, you're okay with roommates. And so. We're trying to not only, we're trying to build, once we get to how mu, how many parking spaces drive the units. Now we're trying to derive the unit mix that is appropriate for. The workforce as we've have experienced it at B G V because we have, we've got. I don't know, eighty or ninety different workforce housing units that we own or control, um, at this point. So there's. Um, this is the way people, our staff wants to live, which we think is representative of the community as a whole. This is primarily for frontline workers. Um, B G V would be required and use the density that we are having this deal. To build about twenty-five percent of this. And so the ask obviously then is for the town to make up the difference. In order to yield the eighty-five units. Um, I think that that's. The density ask is thirty-five plus or minus ten, fifteen percent. Just, I, I mean, it's thirty-six point this today, but when you start doing square footages and we talk with Chris and we figure out what the, in, in Mark and we figure out what the density. I, I don't want to, I don't want to say thirty-six point five and then it turn into something else later on. It's a range that, that, the plans are fluid, but in that, in that range, there's only so much square footage we can put on the site. And so. Pardon?
Thirty-six T D Rs?
Yes, for, yep. But the, the other, so the other fourteen or twenty-five percent are coming from B G V.
So Mike, a second ago, you said you were gonna build this workforce housing and then sell it, right?
We might, yeah. We, we have to look at that as an exit strategy, Kelly.
Yeah, so just so we know what we're getting. When we would obviously have a deed restriction on that, employees that live and work in Summit County. And is that the only thing that the deed restriction, would there be any A M Is or any other? Types of, or that's all up for negotiation?
I think that's a future discussion.
Guys, yeah, just to remind you, when we, do you remember Moose Landing by Blue Fifty Two? So Moose Landing was gonna be built and then, uh, I believe they were gonna master lease.
At least both buildings, all the, there's forty-eight bedrooms and thirty-two units in there.
Half of those units were, uh. Eighty or eighty-five percent A M I and less. And you provided the density on. Half of those that were of a lower A M I. And you did that. That was for the hotel though, right?
It was just a separate thing. We, that, that had no.
So that wasn't required housing for our project. So it's kind of not apples to apples. But when he, when Kenny Famer was building that, like any, he had to have a financial plan. Sure. And he had to know that what he was gonna be doing with those units. And I think it was clear that he was gonna be. Master leasing that building was the intent of it. So it, it goes to how to, you know, and I think your, your intent is to do a master leasing.
Yes, it is.
And, and some of what'll come up is how much of that is, how much, if we're doing a hundred and eighty-one beds, you're taking twenty-five percent of those. As required under policy twenty-four H, then out of the other. Whatever number, how many of those are gonna get master lease? And are we providing density that's just gonna benefit the ski area? Because they're gonna master lease the other seventy-five percent of the units.
Exactly.
Yeah, so with, with Moose Landing, is that what the other one was called?
Yes.
So we provided T D Rs to have lower A M I. And then B G V master leased all of the units in those, or some of those were for just the, like the lower A M I?
Happened, yeah, what happened in this deal is that Kenny came to us when he wanted to build it. And we agreed to the master lease before he got his construction loan. So he was able to leverage our lease to get his construction loan. And then he did exactly what Rick said, half the units had the eighty-five percent. We master leased it, so we just pay him whatever, a hundred bucks a month for the whole thing. And that way he doesn't have to collect rent or anything else like that. That said, the practical application of the eighty-five percent is that every unit in the building rents for the same price. So every unit is compliant with eighty-five percent, even though it doesn't need to be. Um, because we can't have the same apartment and one guy next door is paying two hundred bucks more than the, his neighbor.
We don't, thirty years from now, give them flexibility.
It sure does, yeah. And we've got a twenty-year deal with him. And so if he wants to sell it at some point, he's got sixteen market rate units in there.
Yeah, but when you originally entered into that master lease, it was to satisfy the development agreement for the hotel.
No, no, there wasn't, that wasn't, that was for peak eight. It wasn't, it was for the buildings on peak eight. And those buildings, one and two, and they passed, they passed the time with a positive twelve points because we got ten points for housing. And I came back in and said, we're master leasing this, we've got this done. And the council at the time said no. To that. And so the point analysis on those two buildings went from positive twelve to positive two. But we still did the housing. So we didn't get points for it, but we still did it. Uh, whatever, I mean, that's.
Back to.
Yeah.
Gondola lot, that Moose Landing is not germane to this conversation.
So twenty-five percent are basically forty-five of the bedrooms come from us. That means that there's whatever, a hundred and thirty-five or so bedrooms that are available. To be master leased by a variety of the usual suspects, inclusive of the town of Breckenridge.
You're coming, you're estimating that to satisfy twenty-four A. Required employee housing is gonna be, you said forty-five?
Yeah.
Forty-five.
Beds, three hundred and twenty-five square feet or whatever that number is per bed or whatever. Yep, three fifty, yep, sorry.
If you want us to provide the density, then you certainly weren't, aren't gonna turn around and sell that, right?
Well, no, it'd have the deed restrictions on it, right? And so the, so.
Still subsidizing your project if you're gonna sell it.
Well.
We would do that for anybody that was building, you needed to make it pencil. We'd do that for anybody that was building affordable housing.
Okay.
I mean, as long as, as long as we got control of what that A M I was.
Yeah.
That, that's the whole point. It can't be.
My drives the rents, the rents drive the sale price. The sale price is less than the construction. You could take all the workforce housing that you guys have built, if you want money and go and sell that tomorrow, to leave the restrictions in place. That's what we would be doing is that the restrictions run with the property, not with the people.
The A M I would, would continue with the property.
Whatever the rent restrictions are that were negotiated would run with the property, not with the company.
And that's the only way we would give density.
So B G V, B G V is facilitator of this, but not. That, you know, we're not, you need to act like we don't exist with respect to what the, the rent restrictions are, deed restrictions, rental, rent rolls, et cetera.
I think it needs to be A M I. I know you don't like it and you want something else, but I mean, that's what we're doing everywhere else. And that is our precedent is eighty percent or less A M I. So just a comment.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna. I'm not gonna die on the sword for that one. I don't, I, I, I don't, I think it's a bad metric, but that's my choice and I don't, not my call, it's your call, so.
We're talking thirty-six S, S D Rs? D R, I mean, S T Rs.
No S T Rs.
Better than S T Ds.
Following you consecutively.
Mike, can you talk about the composition that you came up with between the studios and the four bedrooms?
Yes.
And thinking of like frontline employees, they're not all just people here for a couple of seasons. A lot of times they're from our Hispanic workforce, they have families. Do you see this housing project benefiting those folks or is there a way to adjust the composition? That it's not just studios or?
Well, we can, certainly we can, when we get to, uh, you know, more granular discussion on this, have that, we can talk about that, no problem. I would say that, you know, at Moose Landing, not to bring it back there, but that provides some. Use patterns, the Hispanic commu, community in particular, which we have an abundance of for, you know, B G V. They live, there's, they, they get the two bedroom units at Moose Landing and they live. Four, six, eight people in those units. The same, I think the same thing would happen in these four bedroom units where you have large family units or. Related family units living in these, if that's, if that was their choice, um, to be in a larger unit.
Allow that in our workforce housing? Do we have limits and how many people can live in?
I don't know about all the units. I know that, um, and we can check with Lori. I know here on Landing has limits, like in your two bedroom. You can only have four people and we have heard some complaints from like a family of fives that they would love to live there, but they're not allowed.
Yeah.
I don't know, huh?
I'd encourage you to talk to Lori and look at our data because it is not this by any means. It, we, we are trending towards needing more larger units. The larger units do better than the smaller units.
Well. That is, that right there, based on the co, the code, if you want more larger and less studios, that's driving the parking number down to. Each studio is one, but a four bedroom is like one point five cars or something like that. So we, this is, this is, this creates more parking for residents, but so I'll, I'll look at for sure. We're open to.
That might be something to talk about. I mean, one of the things I've been saying for a long time with workforce housing is if, if. I, I've always wanted to try under parking them. With the intent of giving a discount or, or actually not a discount, charging a premium for those that want a parking pass. You know, so that you, you have to pay extra to be able to park the one and a half. You get one for free and if you want to go to one and a half or two, you gotta pay for it.
And I'm in agreement and alignment on that thought. And I think there's other creative things you can do, like you could. There's other creative things you could do that, that have the same impact. I mean, again, in the, in the quest for a comprehensive solution, these are things we certainly are, we want to embrace.
But Dick, maybe to your point a little bit, um. If there was some willingness from the council to budge on those parking numbers, that might change, you know, what Mike has to build. You know, because a lot of that, that is driven by a hundred and fifty or so spaces. You know, if you change it to more four bedrooms, that's gonna reduce the count. Also, if you discounted it to some extent, you could do that in a development agreement. I mean, this is.
Well, then the discussion becomes first though, who, I mean, who in the council thinks North Gondola is the right place to put housing?
And I'm wondering if we're at a point where we should delve, delve into that area.
Well, that, that's a question. Then the number two question is how many bedrooms do we actually want, think need to be on?
When you start, yeah, figure out the location, you know.
First of all, where, what's the location, one or two? And then the second question is, how many bedrooms actually, or how many, how many beds or units? You know, you know what Mike's requirement is? How many above and beyond that do we think actually fit there? Not parking wise, but actually fit there.
I have like five quick site.
Yeah, go ahead.
Site ones that show, that show this and then we go right where you guys want to go. So just, um, to show you the elevations and whatnot on that, where did those buttons go? I can't see them there. So this was, this is the grade level and these gray boxes represent units and you can see the breaks in between the buildings there. This is the second level. Here's the ramp up for the parking deck and here's the parking deck. Again, the buildings with the bigger breaks in between to create some separation. So it's not just a big long row house.
How many bedrooms is that based on? Is that the one eighty-one?
Yes. So you can see some studio units here. You can see some four bedrooms here. This is the third level. And then this is the elevation. This is Park Avenue over here. Where my cursor is going up and down, three levels facing park, shielding the parking structure. Two on the surface of this deck. Three stories all in, but it's, it's broken up and spread out. And then here is an elevation where you can see. Um, this ramp coming up here to this parking deck. And then you can see kind of some breaks in between these buildings, like right here, you can kind of in. Infer that there's a break there. There's another one there. I've got another elevation here, which shows these breaks. And so. We just did a, we know this is gonna change. We just did a massing model. It doesn't look pretty. But it shows you that I think you can, we're gonna build something that looks nice, but it shows you the scope of what the massing would be on the site. Um, and so where's that button again? So our ask is, Gold Rush site is rece, as a receiving site for housing. And then the density to get to the eighty-five units, I understand the density comes with strings. That's not part of. It not strings or can, comes with conditions, right? In terms of rents and things like that. And so. At a high level, it's location and density. And then we get into the details with staff to figure out. The things to come back to you with for your approval on the other, you know, devils in the detail kind of things. That's the end of this.
Okay.
That's the end of my slides.
Okay, so let's take this in, um, in some chunks. Let's start with. Let's start with the, the discussion about where. You feel housing belongs on one or two? Yeah, sure. We, North Gondola or North Gold Rush.
Or two workforce.
We're, that's assuming we can get the other partner to, yeah, do it.
Yeah, right. I mean, that, that, yes. But, but before we even open that door, what, what's the preference of the council? Who wants to start, Jay?
How do we see our residents getting across Park Avenue that are, that are our workforce?
We, okay, so, so one of the, through a. Through a negotiated safe harbor, um, whether that's a bridge, a tunnel, or it's a metered intersection that. Not me, but press the button and a flashing light comes on. With a island safe harbor in the middle of the roundabout or the, one of the tips of the roundabout, if you will, you know, as it kind of has those compass arrows kind of come. So a safe harbor to cross the street on your feet or overhead or under. That said, there is a hundred and eighty-one beds, a hundred and eighty-one people more or less, uh, that are not. Skiers, they're not going to the mountain at eight o'clock. They're going to their jobs or they're not going to their jobs. And so they're not all going and coming at the same time, eight o'clock and four o'clock. And so it's, they're on their feet, either in the air, underground or across, um, the roundabout.
Probably not the one eighty-one, it's the four hundred. Those, those are the bigger problems.
That parking, and that parking lot is. It has been and will continue to be overflow parking for weekends and the ski resort. And the ski resort has an obligation to run a shuttle to move those people across the street to go skiing and from the Gondola back across the street at the end of the day. And so that shuttle, whether people use it or not is a different.
Right.
But that's, that's an existing condition because today there's a hundred cars on North Gondola. Same as today.
I just want, I want to make sure everybody understands.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the full.
Twenty to thirty days a season, the, those four hundred spots in the Gold Rush will be utilized.
Exact same as today.
Those weekends and your peak, other peak.
Right. Difference is when the workers leave their units and return to their units. That's the, that's the only delta from today's existing condition.
Do we have any environmental concerns or impacts of going seven, seventy feet further west than the current parking, parking asphalt is right now into the mountain? You were talking about blasting retaining walls, huge.
Well, cuts, I mean.
Things.
Yeah.
Going in, wh- what, what kind of impacts are we going to experience from that with as far as drainage?
I, how, whatever they are, we have successfully mitigated those impacts multiple times in other buildings. And so we would be consistent with that. I mean, if you look at the backside, the north side of building one at, at GCA, you'll see it's massive retaining wall. Um, so we know how to build it. We know how to drain it. Um, and we would work with, uh, hydrological engineers and, and the town staff to make sure that what we build is, is one hundred percent environmentally compliant.
Kill homes will end up on top of it. Not a big deal.
Um, I had a couple of.
You have a, you have an, an answer. Outside of just questions.
Yes. I'd love to hear.
Okay.
Some more in.
Go ahead.
One of your question, um, this is for Chris or Mark or even Kirsten. If we do decide to go the Gold Rush route, what can we do to guarantee that the Gondola lot is in a future receiving site? If a future can, council wants to work something with Vale or what is our guarantee that nothing will be built on the Gondola site?
There's no guarantees down the road. I mean, eventually some future council could come in and create density on that. There are some things you could probably do now to restrict it so that it, you know, couldn't have any density on it. Um, but some future council could undo that potentially.
We can, we could memorialize it though. We could change land use designation or.
Rezone it.
We could rezone it.
Yeah.
Just to make it more difficult, but you know, future council could do whatever they want. I mean, they can sell all of our affordable housing too and take deed restrictions off and, you know, the Kelly, Kelly Owens administration.
Oh, God.
Gloves are off, baby.
It'd be all childcare, everything.
Everything, every home is childcare.
You had to bill it children.
It's a great idea, Jeffrey.
Um, so on top of the fact, there's so many unknowns with the Gondola lot, Vale working with us or not. Um, I appreciate looking into that area after visiting the site today. Um, thinking about the conflicting uses there between housing, between everything else going on there as well as just the visual impact to town with having housing right there. It is, it is quite impactful. Um, and quality of life, I think both locations would provide a good, good opportunity for workforce housing. We know it's a need, but we want to make it as best as we can. Um, I think the crossing gives me some heartache between Gold Rush and over, but I do think we can mitigate it with one of those solutions presented. Um, so it is my preference for Gold Rush.
Yeah, mine too. Um, yeah, there is, there is some concern about crossing and egress and all that. Um, but also I think it's just going to be less, even just the construction phase, just the aesthetics, it's going to be less intrusive, intrusive as far as the, the aesthetics. And I like the idea of building up against the hillside. And it also turned the construction phase, I think it's more removed. So it's, it's going to be a long build. And I think, I think it will be more appealing and more the community be more livable if we can find, can find a bulk of the construction there to the, uh, to the North Gondola, I mean, to the Gold Rush. Um, also, uh, I'm into, uh, I'm, I, I, I don't have a problem with the thirty six TDRs. Um, I think, uh, I, I, I think it's a small price to pay for, for getting, getting units.
But. Yeah, I'm a fan of moving, putting it on Gold Rush. You know, one of the things from walking the site a couple of times, you look at Mountain Thunder, which is adjacent there, and that's four and a half, five stories, right? So what he's proposing with podiums and then two or three stories on top isn't anywhere near the massing. And it's fascinating to me that parcel, it sets back away from town and it's tucked in the corner. So I, I love that piece of it. I'd almost even look at flipping the massing on the housing to the backside, but that's something you can look at later. Just to have it kind of, almost like kind of go into the hillside, although I do like the idea of the housing blocking the parking. So just something to think about there. Um, yeah, the massing over there, I think makes sense. I think thirty to forty days of full parking. Um, in, in Gold Rush doesn't concern me. I mean, moving the folks, I mean, I love the concept of maybe doing some testing on some creative um, concepts to reduce cars going in and out of there from, on the affordable housing front. I think that's, that's going to be valuable. Um, safe passage, whether underpass or overpass there, I think is going to make a lot of sense on the pedestrian front. I don't, the, the, the foot traffic across, uh, traffic circle kind of terrifies me from just seeing folks cross it like silver shekel. Obviously the speeds will be less, but I think there's a thoughtful way to move people and, and kind of provide the, the direction to get people across park. So I'm, I'm Gold Rush, um, absolutely on board with adding density to make the, uh, the extra units go. Um, you know, I, I think that's really valuable to, to make sure the town's investing in that alongside BGV there on the housing front. Um, I think some creative stuff, looking at some creative exit ingress to get folks off of park into that structure down the road would be valuable. Um, but yeah, Gold Rush is good by me.
Um, Matt, how many days was our parking structure full last year? Okay. Cause that's how many I would say Gold Rush would get used. And I think we really need to insist on that. That, that Gold Rush doesn't get used until our structure is full. Um, but that's aside. I, I'm a, I'm a Gondola guy, Gondola lot guy. I, I, with, with some constraints, um, we have to get it right. You know, it's visible, it's entry to town. I, I think we need to find a way to be in control of, to get heightened architectural control other than over and above the code. I, I, I don't want to see this looking like all the other buildings we're building up late. I think this really needs to look really good. The, you know, the housing that's wrapping the parking structure. At least on the south and east sides. I, uh, I also think we need to just agree to the French Street Roundabout and not feel like that's a negotiable still. I think that's always been part of the deal and needs to be.
Yeah.
Um, and participation in the ski hill intersection, which we already talked about. Um, I'm, I'm okay negotiating with the ski area to try to reduce that, that, uh, sixteen ten number or whatever it is.
Fifteen sixty.
Fifteen sixty number. I'm not comfortable just taking an anecdotal statement that we're parking six ten. I, I think we need to really, in fairness to our community, we need to say, whatever you design, show us what you're designing that meets code and maximize it and that'll be the number. So, um, I, I think we have to follow our code. We can't just take an anecdote. Nobody else gets to do that. I don't think we can do that here. So that might make the delta number a little bigger. Um, uh, we have a way to mitigate that now financially, and it's buying into the parking district at twenty two thousand dollars parking space. I did it when I added on to my casa and so does everyone else when they can't park on site. So I would suggest that as a formula to do, and we could, we could restrict the, those dollars to, to build. Maybe we can put it towards a little structure out on Airport Road as we build. That's going to become problematic for this area too, as we build more employee housing. Um, but I'm not comfortable just walking away from that, that, that number after, after we spent twelve to fifteen million dollars on that number. Um, into two thousand three dollars. Um, I think we need value for that.
Um, Dick, I could tell you that if we end up, if we end up, uh, putting the housing on Gold Rush, everything that Mike is showing is premised off the fact that they're parking six ten. So if they can park six ten per code, then we'll require them to restrike and show six hundred and ten spaces on Gondola. For new codes, so.
As long as it beats code, I mean.
I'm gonna have five hundred and twenty five striped spaces, but you know, count six hundred and ten cars. That's not how.
I mean, we, we, we can get an ARC that, you know, Campy can work it however he wants. As long as it meets code, I'm comfortable using the number. I just, I don't think we can use an anecdotal number that the applicant's just throwing out there. I'm not comfortable with that. So, um, and, and if it's illegally parked not per code, then I'm not comfortable using that either. So I'd, yeah, code's there, but that's a number to work with. Um, I think, um, yeah, I guess those are my thoughts. Now, how much housing do we need to build? My answer to that would be, I want to minimize the, the, the podium that we have to build on North Gondola, make it as small as we can. Um, and then build the amount of housing to wrap it. That, that, uh, that appropriately wraps it and makes it, yeah, yeah, makes it an inappropriate entry to town aesthetically. Um, I know that's pretty, pretty vague, but, um, I think that's important. I don't think we need to max this. This isn't the place to maximize our number. I personally would like to keep Gold Rush just, just surface and just use it when we're maxed out personally. Um, I do believe future councils sometime down the road are going to build on anything that exists. And, uh, I just assume do something tasteful and not too big on, on the Gondola lot now. Those are my general thoughts. I, obviously we have a lot more to talk about, a lot more detail to get to. But, but one of my big deals is I, I'm not comfortable walking away from that Gondola agreement. I remember when it happened and your dad, that was quite an accomplishment on his part. This community would have never done it without this agreement. That was a lot of money.
Um, well, first I do want to thank you because I know that this was a specific, you know, um, task that we requested. And that it really felt like you did not just check a box, but really looked into this. And it definitely helped me and I think many of us up here really be able to picture.
Thank you.
Um, the impact of, you know, both projects or both options. Um, but I, I'm going to agree with Carol. I think she put, I think she put it really well. Um, all, I agree with all of her points that the community impact of, um, such a big development on the Gondola lot is exactly how we got here today.
Yeah.
Which was really having such a hard time with the project that was real, originally proposed. So, um, I am also going to, um, support the North Gold Rush development. And I just, I, while I, you know, want to make sure that we're doing right by employee housing and people moving across, and I certainly don't want to, um, relocate. You know, what happens down at the village. I think it is a different group of people. It's far less people. And I think if we have an underpass and, um, and the roundabout that we're going to be able to manage this and just standing out there on the bike path, you know, we have really committed as a community to looking at the bike path and to lifting that up. And when you walk from that area that's currently by the Gondola and open and has views and it's just really beautiful. Although it is much further from the, you know, elevation wise from the river, which is kind of disappointing, but we'll see what we can do about that. But just having that openness and then walking next to our parking structure, which is so well done and so beautiful. But having an extra block and a half of that seems like too much for our community. And I just don't feel comfortable with that. So Gold Rush is, I think they're a good decision.
Okay. Thank you. Um, again, I, I appreciate the due diligence. I know that a lot of, uh, what you went through, um, with Campy was through some comments, uh, from the last meeting. Um, you know, the, the, the motivation was really to control our own destiny on North Gondola. Like that was of not leaving it to future councils and to actually be able to control what happens there in the center of our town in extremely visible portion of our town. And, um, and so I appreciate the, the, the efforts you went through to illustrate that. I, I do see the pros of Gold Rush. Um, and I think it works in our behalf and the fact that that lot is hidden and will, will assist in being used as a last resort, uh, because it won't be an obvious, uh, parking, um, reservoir where, you know, when we're looking at filling north and south, South Gold, uh, Gondola, uh, first. I am concerned about the architecture. I believe, you know, this is the first of all the buildings that you've done, all the projects you've done. This is the first workforce housing project in this town that BGV will have embarked on. And so I, I would like to have um, some say, you know, and, and some direction on the architecture front since it will be lining highway nine. And so I, I, that, I think that would be something I would love to see the council involved in. Um, that crossing is, I, I, I don't think that interrupting the flow of traffic on highway nine with a push button blinking lights isn't be the answer. I really do believe that the, the, the crossover south of there has been a proof that the people that work and live here will use a tunnel and will, will go there. And if it can be bike friendly, if there is a way to get through, um, that that will be the safest and maybe the most efficient route that we can train people, uh, to do that. Uh, it does give me heartburn that we're, we're going away from planning one oh one. This is something that everything in the textbooks say that it should go in North Gondola, that that's where, uh, this belongs. But, um, and, and that's, that's the staff's preference. And, and I think I get heartburn over in, environmental concerns of this construction and flooding. That's what happened into Park Avenue. And I, I believe you that, you know, you've done this before. It's not your first rodeo of, of development, but I think that is, uh, something that I'm deeply concerned about. And then, uh, you know, on, on a, on a positive note, I do think that there's a lot of opportunity with a private public partnership on the workforce housing. And I think that those other units could be used for our community, for people that are looking for housing today and that are needing that. And, uh, from, you know, the restaurants to the retail shops to our bus drivers. I think that there is really, um, some good that can be done and it can be, it can be used as a template moving forward of having that private public partnership. Um, all that being said, I'm okay with Gold Rush. Um, and, uh, we're forward to seeing it move forward.
Um, I was Gold Rush before. I'm still Gold Rush, even though I had to say it. Of course I did.
But Gold Rush was cool.
It was cool. Um, there are a couple of things though. Number one, got to figure out getting a hundred and eighty one people across. And I agree with Jay, they, you know, I think an underpass works probably better than anything personally.
Works in Keystone.
Yeah, well, it works. The underpass numbers have gotten really quite good, even though the ski area won't share them. They say that they're better. Um, I do like the bike idea, Jay. I think that's pretty important. Um, I'm not sure what the number is. I'm still a little conflicted about how many, of, of, of what this deal is. And let me just say it this way and that was, that was what I was going to say. That was great. That was the soundtrack.
It's rush night at Animal House right there at the Omega House.
Was that you were watching while? Was that you were watching while I was talking?
I am, be fine with density for AMI restrictions of whatever the council deems appropriate for for sale units. Where I have heartburn is density for AMI restricted units for the skier to master plan, for the skier to move people over from Wintergreen because they want to put them over here instead of where they're already housed. Because in a philosophical sense, when we talk about housing people, we always talk about housing new people. And my concern is they're just going to bring people. So we're not going to really create anything for Breck. We're going to solve a scary as problem with our density. And I have heartburn about that. Now, is that really going to happen? I don't know. But that is definitely something that I want to talk about as we go forward with this master lease. If it's all just for sale, it works right into how we always do stuff. And that is we give a developer X amount in order to get X amount on the AMI. And I don't like AMI either, but that's what we use. So that's just where we are. Um, so.
Uh, I have one suggestion that we can handle that. In the deed restriction, we could restrict it to people that work within the Upper Blue Basin, if that's a.
See, the problem, Chris, is they're busing people from Wintergreen to Breckenridge right now. That's the problem. The problem is they're already housing those people. We're not gaining anything for the town. That, that's where my, and, and I might be wrong, but that is my concern with the town giving a bunch of density that in the end will be master leased almost exclusively. I mean, if I was Mike, I would just tell the skier, this is what it's going to cost you and be done with it, right? And then, you know, and then go get the money for it. So there are definitely some things that, to be worked out there. Um. As far as the environmental concerns, I mean, you have environmental laws that you're going to have to I mean, you have to deal with them. That's gotten very little to do with us. And uh, and you live up there. Those are your neighbors on Shock Hill. So any of those homes, homes come down, they're knocking on your door. Um, so that's where I am.
Can I make one last comment?
Yeah.
I'm also okay with the density piece, you know, eh, to what Eric just said. I didn't say that in my earlier comments. I, as long as we get an AI, AMI deed restriction, you know, in perpetuity, I'm okay with that.
What else you want answered?
Yeah, I mean, I think the master lease question is still a big one, but we'll have some.
Never thought of that.
It was actually Kelly, Kelly's, Kelly brought it up to me today.
Breckenridge developer and we'll solve Breckenridge's problems. And so we'll do a development agreement that embodies that philosophy.
The only argument for it though is our goal is to house our, our workforce in Breckenridge in the upper blue because they become part of the community. They represent the community better. They end up staying often. And so for that reason, I guess I go back and forth on that one.
And maybe it's really just.
To talk about it, to make sure that we're not blind, blindsided at some point about it.
Mark, can you think of other stuff today?
Do we want to talk about number of units? I mean, I, I, I'd sort of like to just give Mike some insight into, you know, it, how did?
What I heard was we, I think some of you would like to see a little more. Four bedrooms and maybe like.
Is.
I ask your question differently. The massing models that I showed you with the, it, does that, does that look right? Cause if that looks right, then we can modulate the unit configuration, right? We can have more twos or three or whatever, you know, however we want to do that. And so the massing model is, is that okay? Or does that want to be less or more?
Does not available? Did we finish that?
Well, that's not a, yes, it's pretty much done and we know we need. I've given you the total.
Well, we don't need the unit council more. I was just thinking like, I don't know if any of us can really sit up here and say, I think we need a, you know, some two bedrooms. I think I'd rather just.
Asking, I'm asking, is that too much program on that site as you drive into the community? Or are you okay, as a council, are you okay putting as much as possible there is really? That's really the question that I want him to know that we're thinking about. So the way, the way that Mike did this was he figured out how many parking spaces he could accommodate and that's how many units he has. Are we actually saying, look, you got twenty-five percent of that is yours. We think you should only build half of the rest, or we think less than, less than the maximum is what we're thinking. And I, I know that's a difficult question to answer at this early stage, but I think Mike needs to know that there is either no hesitation and build as much as you can or some hesitation, which is where I am. I, I would rather not maximize the density or attainable housing or workforce housing on this site. If you see what I'm, I'm trying to.
Well, I think we already dropped the number of beds by half, right? You know, last time you were here, we're talking about three hundred and seventy or.
Now you're down to one eighty, right?
Yeah, so I, I think that it's in the right direction. Um, well, again, I don't think at least I can speak for myself. I can't say, well, you know, maybe it should be one sixty-five instead of one eighty or whatever it is, but definitely something, some models to know what that, what those numbers look like. I think having those spaces in between that you, you alluded to are, is important to break up the buildings. Um, and, and seeing how that, how that works with the layout. But there is, there's a lot of frontage there to play with and to, to kind of work with that design. Um, I think right now just to be, you know, put in the cart in front of the horse that it's important to me not to have balconies where like there's storage and couches and bikes and everything hanging out right on the, on the frontage of north uh, of north park coming into town. Um, and to try to make that face as aesthetic as possible.
And along with that, I feel like it is important that these are still really high quality spaces and um, one of the things that I think we always hear from people in workforce housing is there's not enough storage. So while I don't think this looks too overprogrammed and I'm with Jay, I'm not going to say I think a hundred and sixty would be better. What I'd really like to know is will these people have what they need to have a good life in this location? Will they have storage? Will they have good windows? You know, will they feel jammed in or not? So I would rather see like a a quality of life sort of thought process go into it more than this is the right number or that's.
Previously, when you were looking at the, the previous master plan, we indicated that we, there was the staff recommendation to preserve the tree buffer because there's a large number of mature trees there. And that's some of the feedback you've given early with this, this site. And then maybe that's important to echo. Um, at this point in general, I think we prefer seeing more units on the, on the, the structure because we think it looks more like a building versus a parking structure then. But with the caveat, if you can jog it and make sure you preserve that tree buffer, which softens the appearance of both the structure and the housing.
Cause it looks like from these, he's cutting not only the buffer, but every other tree on the lot, which I like.
I could just, in addition to the Bill Campy, DTJ Design, um. Outside of Mike's uh, parking backend, we also thought about other things, which included two and three story massing mix, breaking down the facade. So it's not one solid wall on the highway. And we actually gave more space than we had before and more space than exists currently. If you look at the line where the parking lot is for buffer to the road. And I think if you were to think about all combination of all those things, I actually think that housing is going to be pretty kind of quiet on that frontage way, you know, with those large existing trees there as much as we can preserve. There'll be some drainage and tension ponds and stuff we'll have to accommodate. But I think in terms of comparison, at least to the previous project master plan, this has made some, some bounds forward. I think Chris was kind of hinting at that in terms of even kind of progressing further than what we were at our last, you know, on our way to approval on that plan. So there's a lot of thought on how this can mass, whether it's balconies or not, or whatever, we're, you know, whatever we can work through all that or unit mix stuff. We can obviously work through all that.
Yeah, that's down the road. Yeah, okay.
I think, I, I like Kelly's comments about quality of life for the workforce. I also think Eric asked the right question. I'm, and I'm not comfortable maxing it out. You know, I want something, I, I felt like when we saw the master plan for the North Gondola, you know, development when we were back on that one, um. Uh, you know, when we saw it with these kind of bubble things, you know, it looked okay. But then after we saw the whole program, it, I felt like it was way over programmed. So I, I would want more information before I can give a better answer than not maxed and things like, you know, what are setbacks? What kind of, you know, natural buffer are we going to have between the road and the housing, you know, mature trees and that kind of thing? It, it just some more details before I can really answer that question. Um, I uh.
I think we have substantial experience in this space because what we've done, you know, for thirty-five years to say, here's the density. And then we go and design a building, go to planning and someone says, take some air out of the balloon, right? And then so I think that to move this forward, if we say this eighty-five unit mix, take a look at livability, quality, environmental issues. There is a detention pond that you couldn't see in that drawing to the north side of this. You can't even see it in this. Um, but if we start at eighty-five and it's not going to turn into fifty, if eighty-five turns into seventy-nine or something like that, because we take out a couple of units here and there, we're used to that. What I don't want to do is have eighty-five turn into forty-five units and then I'm like, then it demolishes work and demolishes the, you know, performant, things like that. And so I think that if we can proceed in the space of eighty-five with some of these concerns that you voiced, so you can come back in and take a look at it. I, 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 I don't, I can't ask you for more than that tonight, um, in terms of, I hear what you're saying. We're used to that part of the process to design it per code, per, you know, a curb appeal, those kinds of things. We're, we're good at that. Um, and, and we'll dive into that part of the process.
For me, that's part of the problem. That's how we've gotten in trouble.
Okay.
I'm not comfortable doing it.
Okay.
Personally, that's precisely what I was trying to say. I'm not comfortable doing that at this point. Saying let's work together and let's try to get there, but I'm not comfortable saying eighty-five is the right number. I don't know. I don't have enough information.
I can weigh in a little bit there, Dick. I think the massing that's up there seems to feel like it's a little bit smaller than Mountain Thunder, which is I think kind of maybe the feel that we want coming in there is a little bit less than those five story structures and it's from the initial blush, it seems like it's maybe in the ballpark and certainly a place to start and, and from my perspective, a, a place to start from. And then I think you can add air in the balloon or reduce it and see what feels good.
Adding air.
I can't make, I can't, I don't have a helium machine and I don't have enough parking spaces. So.
There's no adding of air.
Franken, that's a new term.
I, I am willing to work with you on parking if, if we can work with our housing department and learn from what we've learned in terms of unit configuration.
I wouldn't be, you know, I wouldn't want to see this go over two hundred beds. I mean, when it was a bigger number, that's too many over there. We're going to have to work really hard. You know, it's one thing to build it so that it looks good, which everybody's concerned about, but then how's it going to operate and function because you know, you got housing in the middle there. People create these you know, and it gets dark in the middle of winter at five o'clock and people will just run across the road because it's the quickest route to City Market.
Yep, it's, they will.
And we have to create, we have to have opportunities and buffers to create natural barriers and things along there too. So that that be, otherwise we're going to have an unsafe situation. And that's our job to look at that through those lens because we know this is not, you know, this is not the same client talent. It's a thunder mountain, a mountain thunder. But uh, so I mean, we know that what's going to happen and we have to, you know, design it in a way that does that. And so I think anywhere between one fifty and two hundred beds, we could live with. Not three hundred in this location ever.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, yes. Anything else you need to know tonight?
No, thank you very much. I appreciate the clarity and the direction. We'll, we'll do something good here and we'll work together to make that happen.
Right. Any final thoughts from council?
Thanks for working on this.
Thank you.
So we gotta go, we're going to uh, not today, but the plan is we're going to start working our way up, right? We're going to start talking. I'm really trying to be, have an awareness of that timeframe.
Yep.
What do we need, Mark? What, what's our plan? Now, are we going to do this at the next meeting? I was gonna get together with Mike in the next day or two and just see, is there something we could bring to the, the next meeting? Is that realistic? If it is, let's, let's do it. Otherwise we would go for the twenty-six.
I want you to play back.
Trail, the, the admin site. Um, yeah, and South Gold Rush and then of course a little Chalisa.
We very much would, would take off of, of all or a portion, probably more realistically a portion of one of those at the next meeting. And we can make, we can deliver maybe a little quicker than today because we won't have confusion on these numbers, but we can make that happen for that September twelfth meeting. Three weeks, so.
Yeah, we have three weeks.
It gives us, get an extra bonus Tuesday.
My favorite.
Fifth Tuesday of the month.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Kirsten probably. So this is not an active application, so we are not restricted in our ability to talk to people in the community, correct? We're not correct.
Um, it, it's probably best for us to do a little.
People are coming to us.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I, and I understand. So maybe we should discuss a little bit more offline, but it generally speaking, we have two things that are potentially going on. One is the legislative action for the approval of the development agreement. There's also a potential for rezoning, correct? So, um, I think that yes, you, you're in a space where you have more liberty right now to speak with others, but I, I would caution you that best practice would be to avoid too much of that.
Saying we can use our own discretion.
Use your discretion. Use Kelly's discretion, please.
I mean, when you say anything that we've discussed in public, you can discuss with that. I mean, I would still say, don't really tread, don't form too many opinions.
No, no, I, I don't want to form opinions. I just, you know, input's good. You learn. I'm in a learning phase right now. I mean, my, my preference got shot down, so I got to learn about you guys. Which is fine, you know, so that's really the spirit of it, Eric.
Right, thank you, you guys. Yeah, let's do reports and then we'll have dinner.
Let's let you know, um, Matt checked on numbers and we filled forty-two days last season, which was ten more than the season before. They opened Gold Rush sixteen days and it filled ten of those.
Oh, wow. So, that's it?
That's great.
Good. Well, take those numbers, Matt.
Yeah.
Could you email that to us? Cause I already forgot them.
Uh, Rick, you got anything for uh, town manager and staff?
We do. Talk to you, Chad is going to talk to you about Nordic fees. Even though generally we would do all your fees as part of the budget process, they like to start advertising the sale of the winter passes and we, we align our fees because of our agreement with North Nordic and Frisco.
Thanks for the primer. So, um. Anyway, um, so we have not raised our Nordic pass rates since the twenty twenty-one season. And as Rick just said, um, the Nordic centers are getting ready to post their sales and get ready to start selling passes, which generally starts to happen before we get too far into the, the budget or far enough into the budget. So we wanted to talk to you about this now. Um, we're looking at about a six, anywhere between a six to ten percent increase depending on the pass type. Um, so that would be about three dollars for the day passes and between fifteen and twenty dollars depending on the type of pass for the punch passes or the season passes. Um, the increase is to account. Um, the increase is to account for staffing and fuel cost increases. And again, it keeps us aligned with Frisco and Breck Nordic and is important because we do have a pass product that is for all three areas. Um, and that's about all I had. We wanted to see if you all would be agreeable to that increase. And I can answer questions or we can have Scott come down and answer questions as well.
Jack him up.
I think it's, it's, it's a small price to pay. I don't know, I have no problem with it.
Be good. All right. Thank you very much.
Uh, Dick had asked me the other day where we were at, if you recall. The employee mitigation model that we are currently using under twenty four A is the one from the Town of Vale. And we commissioned to have our own study done. So it's been very difficult for uh. Company's name?
EPS.
EPS to to gather some sufficient data from some of the businesses. They haven't been super cooperative. And so uh, we're still lacking on a few restaurants with outdoor seating that. Now we're at a place where we've identified and we're making personal phone calls to help get some additional data. For them so that they could have enough to, to draw their conclusions and make their expeditions. Once, once we're uh, done with that, they think they can turn the report in two to three weeks.
Excellent.
Right, it's the status of that. And anybody that's going to be going on uh, the housing tour on Monday, we'll probably send out something. We might, if we want, we could meet here at our pool over to the senior center.
There you go. All right, uh, we didn't have cast or M M C. We have cast this weekend. This Thursday, Thursday, Friday. Are you going? You're on?
Oh, I wasn't invited. No, I'm not.
For a reason.
All right.
And we invite Jeffrey too, and he never shows up. Uh, open space. Uh, we have a meeting next week. Um, FYI, if you saw the uh. Someone driving down the body floor trail about that, was that you?
No, that wasn't, um, uh, because we have a two wheel drive vehicle. Uh, it was, I guess he was going down a Aldi road of Boris Pass and tried to avoid a moose, went off the road and thought they could just. Go downhill and follow it out and uh, turns out, um, because of our excessive birmingham. Uh, he, he, he or she got high sided on a double jump. And uh, and it was, it was a, a feature that, that uh, was screwed him.
Good thing we had a double jump, otherwise he'd have been in.
Woods.
Oh, yeah, he would, yeah.
He didn't quite.
Didn't have enough to.
Years.
Didn't enough, but you know, when we get Rankin's new wheelchair downhill course, it'll be okay.
Double jumps.
Yeah.
Or is it? Anything to add?
Uh, no, we didn't have a meeting since our last meeting.
History?
Have not met.
Creative arts.
Have not met.
Um, I have a question for you, or not a question for you, I have a, something I'd like you to ask them. So we went to Circa the other night. And as I have mentioned multiple times. The way we have that thing built, if you sit in the second row on any platform, you can't see any. So I had a dude in front of me that not only was big, but he constantly moved. So it really disrupted the thing. And the thing I was wondering is, why don't we stagger the chairs? Why are the chairs in line instead of staggered? I'm sure there is a reason, but if you can bring that up. Um, I know you, I know it. I know you would limit the amount of things and maybe you got to build something to put at the end so that they don't automatically go there. But it seemed like a solution rather than tearing the whole floor up, so.
I like it.
Thank you.
I like that, so.
Uh, C M L. Advisory board.
Advisory. We have not met. Our next meeting is first week in September. So there hasn't been much rumbling behind the scenes of what's going on. I know they um, brought together a big meeting, cast was there, but also some twenty other organizations to talk about a preemptive approach to. Create a housing bill, um, so no major updates, but there's a lot going on.
C C I was there, correct? Yeah.
Who was there?
Yeah, Colorado counties, which I think is a good collaboration.
Are you serving your authority?
Always.
Uh, childcare?
Uh, no, mainly.
And social equity.
We did have a meeting yesterday, um, so we talked about a handful of things. One thing, um, just based off the Blue River's pathways project, trying to get some commission input on how we can reach uh, Spanish speaking. Community members, so um, the commission had some good ideas. And one thing that was insightful, I mean, we have a variety of community members on that board, young, old, different groups. And um, there were a handful of them that had no idea about the survey and more so, I think they brought to our attention. Um, the confusion with the name, someone thought they saw it and they thought it was the town of Blue River. Was doing a survey, so it was really insightful to learn.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, not as good as Breck. Uh.
Cool.
Yeah.
Other matters?
Several.
Bring them on.
Well, first, since you just talked about Biffa, I will say that I thought Biffa was extremely successful this year. We went to tons of stuff, most of it free, but also some um, paid stuff and lots of kids stuff and had a great time. So I really liked it.
Yeah, it was good.
Um, also, the, I think Jen Shank might have sent you a picture, but. There, we probably should be doing some sort of crossing or management um, between the Kingdom Park soccer fields and the police station. Um, so the only ADA's accessible um, parking spot is at the police station. And then they walk across and like, for one thing, we don't have enough parking there, so people are parking at Timberline, which is great. I mean, shared parking is terrific, but there are no crosswalks, nothing managed there at all. And it is chaos at, you know, for two hours that night. And Jen Shank brought to my attention that she was parked in the ADA and they were walking out and almost got hit by the car. Um, who was just on the road there and it's, you know, it's also difficult because the bike pass, so they like stop and wait and then they're happy to go. They're all rushing through, so it definitely needs some management down there. Um, and then I also went to a Summit Foundation fundraiser and was stopped by several people who would like to discuss walking on the golf course. And that while it is a liability concern, it's been done for a long time and they would. They said, you know, post a sign that says, walk at your own risk, whatever, walk outside of golf course hours, but they really want to be given the green light to walk out there.
With dogs.
I, I personally really support it because that is a town of Breck course, that is a town area and it does not need to be exclusive. So I think anything we can do to. Let it be okay. At their own risk would be appreciated and is the right thing to do.
We can definitely look at it. Dogs are a problem.
Issue.
We should allow pickleball at there too.
Yes.
Is that, you done with your other matter?
I'm done, thank you.
Uh, another matter, we, I believe, I'll ask Seth. The um, I believe the ADA or the wheelchair accessible trail is up and running, I saw it. And uh, we have yet to, anyone's met my challenge of pushing me on it.
Oh, I will.
You, you know what? You, you, you have to wear, you have to wear crampons. It's a little steep, so we'll, we'll get a wheelchair and uh, and we'll do it.
It actually came out nice.
Yeah, it did. It's, it's fine. I just, little bit steep, but we'll see.
Yeah, it came out fun.
Yeah.
Let's do it, Jeffrey.
Other matters? Todd?
Oh, those two letters we got, I thought they were both legit. Now I gotta remember what they were. The one, you know, do, do we have any clarity as to whether C dot's going to let the people commuting, you know, from Fair Play Alma? Get you, are they considered local traffic or not?
My understanding that that is, that that's why that county road board detour is there for those people that are commuting over.
If we. I hate adding more to the staff's work, but I mean, if we could just send a letter or talk about how important that is, that. That, that our workforce that's commuting over here would be considered local traffic.
She died. She's got a nice rapport with them.
I was really.
The other one, you know, just maybe make sure a bu- building official goes over and.
They already went, are you talking about the mold issue they brought up at the?
Great.
Yeah, we've already went.
I don't need details, as long as we followed up, that's great.
We did.
That was, that was, I thought I.
Well, it is a construction area and is kind of dirty. They did not find mold.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we will adjourn until seven o'clock.
I'll, I'll play this out.
Uh, play some music, huh?
So what are we doing about? That's probably true.
Good warning. Let that be a lesson to you.
Let that be a lesson to you, future mayor. Oh, yeah, big time, big time.
Um, we're on mute and it's happening.
Okay. I'd like to call the order, the town council regular meeting for Tuesday, August twenty second, twenty twenty three. It is seven P M. Roll call, please.
Kelly Owens.
Here.
Dick Carleton.
Here.
Jeffrey Bergeron.
Here.
Carol Sade. Hey. Jane Beckman.
Present.
Todd Rankin. Mayor. Eric Mamula.
Yes. Very official.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't do, who are you? What's your name?
I am Maddie Norgard. I am the records and municipal court coordinator and I'm filling in for Helen.
Okay, I know, I know, I know you weren't Helen. I knew that right away.
Random person.
It's amazing we got that far.
Yeah, it's very well. I just want to say welcome to the town council meeting.
I want to tell you, you're in charge of him. That end of the table's in charge of Jeffrey.
All of a sudden. Jesus. Proven of the minutes, proven of the minutes for August eighth, twenty twenty three. Anybody have any changes, Jeffrey?
Oh, miss. Great. It's great minutes. All right, minute stand is presented, agenda. Rick? All right, agenda stands is presented. We have public comments. Three minute time limit. Uh, anybody in the audience wish to come up and tell us what they think? How smart Jeffrey is, how wonderful. Seth wants to talk about walking on the golf course. Pickleball on the golf course, I'm telling you. Great. All right, with that, the public comment period is closed. We go to continued business. We have second readings of council bill number twenty eight, series twenty twenty three. This is a bill for an ordinance. Mending the municipal code to display merchandise outdoors. Mark.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, this is an amendment to the outdoor display merchandise section of the code. We'll do a couple of things. It will exempt uh, oversized outdoor equipment. Um, a few items are listed there like bikes and uh, also uh, watercraft like uh, stand up paddle boards, that type of thing. Um, to allow the, them to be displayed outside. Um, there's a couple other minor changes that are proposed in the packet, including uh. The allowance for the town manager to set a third weekend a year for outdoor sales days. Questions? I'm here.
Questions for staff? Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this second reading this evening? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On uh, second reading, I move we pass council bill number twenty eight, series two thousand and twenty three, the title which has been read into the record.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion from council? That roll call, please.
Council member Rankin.
Yes.
Council member Carleton.
Yes.
Council member Beckerman.
Yes.
Council member Owens. Council member Sade.
Yes.
Council member Bergeron. Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we also have a second reading, council bill number twenty nine, series twenty twenty three. This is a bill for an ordinance approving lease with the Breckenridge Tourism Office, Inc.
Mayor, council, this uh, ordinance if approved would allow the town manager to enter into a five year lease. With the Breckenridge Tourism Office for the purpose of leasing office space. At the professional building next door, which is owned by the town of Breckenridge.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions for town manager? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading? Yes, sir. What can we do? With that, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, I move we pass council bill number twenty nine, series twenty twenty three, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Is motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council member Sade.
Yes.
Council member Rankin.
Yes.
Council member Owens.
Yes.
Council member Carleton.
Yes.
Council member Bergeron.
Yes.
Council member Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have two first readings this evening. The first is the first reading of council bill number thirty. Series twenty twenty three. This is a bill for an ordinance to locally landmark a historic property at one oh six South French Street.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. Chris Kulik, planning manager for the record. We have a, at first reading tonight, a bill to locally landmark the Howe residence, uh, located at one oh six South French Street. At the final hearing, uh, the planning commission found that the residents did meet the criteria. Um, that's required for local landmarking under at, under title nine, chapter eleven, historic preservation. Uh, which includes that the property is more than fifty years old. The architectural designation criteria um. Set forth under one B, uh, exemplifies uh, specific elements of architectural style or period. That is particularly associated with the Breckenridge area. And then finally, uh, criteria C, the physical integrity criteria um, was met. Uh, at the final hearing, the commission recommended by a vote of seven zero that this property be landmarked. And there was a condition of approval that said that the, the property must be landmarked in order to get free basement density. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for staff?
Just, we, we, so we have, we're going to have two landmarkings here, right? Can we, can, is it okay to, can I just do a two for?
No.
You're going to do it one at a time.
Okay. Questions? Is there motion?
Yes, I move, I, I move on us. First reading that we pass council bill number thirty, series twenty twenty three, the title which has been read into the record.
Okay.
There's motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council member Beckerman.
Yes.
Council member Sade.
Yes.
Council member Owens.
Yeah.
Council member Bergeron.
Yes.
Council member Rankin.
Yes.
Council member Carleton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes, we also have a first reading, council bill number thirty one, series twenty twenty three. It's a bill for an ordinance to locally landmark a historic property at one twelve North French Street.
Good evening again, uh, first reading, we do have a um, proposal for landmark, our bill for landmarking of the Casey residents located at one twelve North French Street. At the final hearing, the planning commission uh, voted six zero to recommend landmarking to the town council and found that. Uh, the three criteria, including uh, the property being more than fifty years old and being um. Uh, style particularly associated with the Breckenridge area and uh, meeting the physical integrity. Uh, for the landmark criteria were met. Uh, with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for staff? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading? With that, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, I move we pass council bill number thirty one, which is eerily similar to council bill number thirty, but different. Uh, series twenty twenty three, the title has been read into the record.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council member Carleton.
Yes.
Council member Owens.
Yeah.
Council member Beckerman. Council member Bergeron.
Yes.
Council member, council member Rankin.
Yes.
Council member Sade.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes, uh, we have planning commission decisions. From. Hmm, the fifteenth of August, twenty twenty three. Are there any call ups this evening? No, planning commission decisions stand as presented. Are there any other matters this evening? I don't think so. And with that, we are adjourned.
So why, why do they record decisions? Why do we have to do this?
I know.